Seven o'clock being upon us. I'd like to welcome everybody to the planning board. My name is Debbie Homewood. I serve as the chair. A quorum is present. The meeting is therefore called to order. Tonight's proceedings will go as follows. Public hearing will be opened by reading legal notices into the record. The applicant will have the opportunity to make a presentation to the board. The board members may ask questions of the applicants. Once the board has concluded its questioning, I will open the hearing for public comment. And you don't have to register to speak. Somebody asked me that question. You're okay with that? All members in attendance who wish to ask questions or make a comment need to be recognized by the chair. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name and address for the record and speak loudly. Our audio system is not good here. We're all going to speak as loudly as possible so that everybody can anybody. Cheryl, can you hear me back there? Okay. All questions and comments must be directed to the chair, and I will call upon board members and applicants as needed to respond. The applicant is needed to respond. The board will then move into a period of deliberation which will determine whether or not to close the public hearing and move to a vote, or continue the public hearing for a later date. A few quick reminders. Please remain respectful. Please turn off your cell phones. Please be concise in your comments. And side conversations, we need to keep them down because then we can't hear you and you can't hear us. Please. Okay.
Okay.
Somebody's, the owl's talking to me. Are we good? First meeting. 289 Walpole Street, special permit under section 3.8, conversion of historic residential structures. Who's rep, up front please. And if you can speak as loudly. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to read the public notice. Who's Archie? Who's our, you? That's Rob? Okay, Rob, read that in the, please. Rob's got it.
Notices hereby given that the planning board of the town of Norwood will hold a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning board of the town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on June 30th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, at the request of Johnny Cassis regarding property located at 289 Walpole Street. Map 12, block 5, I'm sorry, block 4, lot 5, Norwood, Mass, O2062. In the resident, in the single residence 2 zoning district, S2, the hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. And will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to section 3.6, conversion of certain historic residential structures to convert the existing 7,458 square foot, single-family residence originally constructed in 1900 to four residential units in a manner that substantially maintains the historic exterior of the structure. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Written materials from the public may be submitted to the board by emailing comdev@norwoodmass.gov, no later than noon on the third business day before the hearing. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the planning board and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodmass.gov or by calling 781-762-1240, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Okay.
My name is Chris Kirby. I'm representing the owner, John, 83 Bond Street, Norwood. I'm representing the owner Johnny and Ramona Cassis. Johnny can't be here tonight because his wife Ramona and their niece Stephanie. Thank you, Madam Chair and the board, for hearing our special permit application. We request a special permit from the planning board for the conversion of historic residential single-family home into four separate residential units as allowed per zoning bylaw section 3.6. The house was built, constructed in 1873 and contains about 7,500 square feet of living space where 3.6 requires that the house be built before 1930 and at least 4,000 square feet.
Is nobody in here yet? At all?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot Sarah wanted to.
So, we acknowledge that the hearing, the sound situation here is not ideal. We do not have a functioning speaker system to use right now.
Why can't these things suck?
So, these are for Norwood Community Media. These are for Norwood Community Media, and they, they do the video broadcast, but they do not project in the room. You can help us. There's a lot of people here tonight, and that makes it a little bit difficult. So, the things that you can do that in our experience make a really big difference is minimizing side conversations. When the hearing you're here to attend finishes, you can exit, you know, as quickly as you can and maybe chat with your friends and your neighbors once you get out to the parking lot. If you are participating in the public comment, wait until you're recognized by the chair to speak. At that time, you can approach the podium, and we would ask your cooperation in projecting loudly, as our applicants and their representatives are being asked to do as well. The board will do their best to remember to speak up. I do have a small number of assisted listening devices, which are headphones that you can put on that amplify the sound to assist you in being able to hear what's going on. So, I have a few of those. If you'd like one, kind of flag me down, and I can bring one to you. We appreciate your understanding. We acknowledge that this is not ideal, and we apologize that it may be a challenge for you to follow what's going on. Our priority is making sure that you're able to participate and understand this hearing. That's why we have this process. So, again, thank you for your, thank you for your cooperation.
We can't hear you.
Move closer together.
Turn around and face up.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Let's not yell from the audience. Let's try. Okay. Would you mind holding the mic and standing over there and see if that helps? Okay, quiet, please. Can you hear, can you hear him if he stands over there? Okay.
Hello? Can you hear me?
It's not for loudspeaker, it's only for the camera.
Oh, oh, I got you. Okay, sorry about that. So, I'm Chris Kirby, and representing Johnny and Ramona Cassis. Their niece, Johnny's not here tonight, but their niece is. They're the owners of the property. I'll start again. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the board adhering our special permit application. We request a special permit from the planning board to convert a historic residential single-family home into four separate residential units as allowed per zoning bylaw section 3.6. The existing house was completed in 1873 and contains 7,500 square feet of living space where section 3.6 requires that the house be built before 1930 and at least, and have at least 4,000 square feet. The proposed project highlights are, the home is a historic residential structure of mansion-scale, second empire-style architecture with a mansard roof, and the house is named the Oak View Mansion. Construction began in 1870, was completed in 1873, and the house has undergone numerous additions and renovations. We plan on converting the existing single-family home into four separate dwelling units that are approximately 2,000 square feet each. To obtain the 2,000 square feet for each unit, an addition is proposed on the rear and sides of the structure that are barely visible from Walpole Street. A five-car attached garage is proposed to the bright rear side of the structure, the east side, with a second curb cut and driveway to enter from Fisher Street. The existing driveway on the front of the house will remain with a dedicated traffic light, and a new driveway on Fisher Street will remediate any traffic congestion at the light for the residents entering and leaving the property. The addition and garage replicate the second empire-style architecture to fit in and complement the original structure, and the addition complies with the zoning setback requirements for a structure in an SR2 zone. As you may have noticed, the grounds were cleared of trees. A perimeter fence was installed, and approximately 140 green giants were planted along the fence line for screening. The owners have engaged the services of a landscape architect who has put together a landscape plan that is on page three of the drawings. The house will be a gut renovation with updates to mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, including meeting the current energy code requirements. New energy-efficient windows will be installed, and the tired exterior siding and trim will be removed, and the trim replaced with PVC in kind, and the clapboard replaced with the stucco siding. The stucco siding is historically accurate finish for a second empire-style home with a mansard roof. The owners are proud of the home and are planning on investing significant resources into the project to bring the Oak View alive again. We believe we have satisfied the requirements of section 3.6 to allow us to convert the home to four separate residences, and we respectfully request approval of our planning board appeals permit application. Thank you for hearing our petition, and we look forward to a positive vote.
Thank you. Open up to the board. Any question?
Yes. Is the whole, you're not preserving any of the, what you have there now as far as the, you know, the clapboards? It's all going to be stucco, the whole building, or just?
The trim work is going to remain, well, it's going to be, you know, it's all tired. It needs to be replaced. So, the trim work's going to be replicated in kind with PVC, like all the ornate trim work all around the outside, and the clapboard's going to be replaced with stucco.
Anybody else?
Condos or condos? You said dwelling units.
Yeah, four separate dwell, I mean condos. It'll probably be condos at some point, yeah.
Okay, 2,000 square foot, pretty good. Are you putting in central air?
Yes.
And chiller units, things like that, are going to be located on the side of the building?
They'll be screened from, screened from, you know, from view.
And internal trash setup or dumpster type thing?
It'll be, you know, the typical green trash barrels that we, you know, that we have.
So, not a dumpster?
Not a dumpster, no.
And then future, you've got, all this is, you've got a lot of people, the pool and all that is on the road, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And I'd say the setbacks are good. You're going with the stucco. Is any of the interiors staying? The staircase or any of that?
They're going to relocate the stairwell. I think that's going to remain. But, you know, it's all, it's all just 150 years old.
And I saw the landscape plan on the front. So, when you come in off of Walpole Street, you kind of swing in to a circle, the trees all along that, and then we're planting, it looks like in the Laurel La Crena, you have a chowel property, you have a driveway, some live trees going in there?
Yeah, a lot of, you know, flowering trees and, you know, trees that stay green all year.
So, basically, other than the, we're going from a clapboard to a stucco from Walpole Street, it's pretty much going to remain the same?
Exactly.
Okay. And other than that, it looks pretty, to me, it looks pretty clean. So, that, right now, Madam Chair, that's all I have right now.
Brian?
So, about the stucco, you said in your presentation that that's characteristic of that type of house?
Yes.
Did this particular building ever have that finish?
Not, not that I have noticed, no.
Okay. Not that it's necessarily before us, but I'm just curious. Would it be like a, like off-white coloring? You're like, what?
Yell, Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm asking about the stucco finish, whether or not the house ever had it, and I guess it didn't. What would the, not that it's before us, but I'm just curious at this point, would it, like, what would?
Like a cream color.
Like a cream color?
Yeah.
The driveway is currently a crescent driveway? Like, is it, is it, it's two, and one of the entrances is the one at the corner of Fisher that you're keeping?
That's, that's the existing, and it's going to remain.
There's not, it doesn't, it's, is that the only entrance at this point?
The only entrance, it kind of goes in front of the building, and then it's a circle. There's an existing circle there right now.
So, this driveway is going to enter the same way it currently does?
That one will, and we're going to have a second one on Fisher Street, yes.
Okay. It's nice to see the property's being approved. It's a lovely house, so nice to see what's being done. Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead.
Sure. Hi. One, I, look at the plans. I have difficulty with what's staying, what's being moved or relocated or demo because you're not showing, you know, it'd be nice if the existing was actually pocheted in so you can actually see the difference, right? How much is being stayed? Yeah, I understand planning, we're looking at the outside. I got an issue with the stucco. Do we have any of the style of a home with stucco in Norwood?
25 Burwick Street. It is a mansard style with stucco finish on it.
So, so one does exist in this?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Because of concern of the presentation, the preservation for it, will you be following any guidelines for historic preservation? Established by the U.S. Department of Interior? Probably not.
I haven't looked into that yet, no.
It'd be, it'd be good if you look into that.
Yeah. We will.
I think it's, it's nice that we can save the building. We're not knocking it down and putting in a nice shiny square. It's got a lot of character. I like what you've done with the layout. It looks like it would actually be a fun place to live. But as far as the stucco, I am more in favor of clapboard, just to keep it more historically accurate. Not sure where our jurisdiction lies with that, but I think it would be, it would be nice if it could look the same as it does or had prior, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're going to have all the same ornate trim work and all that, just the clapboard's going to be stucco.
Right.
We love it as it is. We wish we could change anything, but just because it's too old, we need to do anything. This is the only.
Yeah.
Say your name and your address.
Loud, please.
Ramona Cassis, 41 Maxwell Avenue, Norwood.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
I just think that this may be the first opportunity to use the zoning that I think was made specifically for these types of houses. I, I think it is. And it was made this way that you could allow more units within a building so that you could save the house instead of demolishing it. So, I, it looks very successful as far as that is concerned. So, I'd like to see that.
Okay, my turn. When we did this, when did we put this in?
Four years ago.
Four years ago? And because we don't have a lot of these houses left, and I think I stated at the time that a lot of us have not even been in the house. So, if we could keep the outside for its charm, some people think 150 years old is a bad thing. I don't happen to think so. However, the, the thing that, that we're going to look at is the outside of the house. And stuccoing a mansard, I know Ally's house is stuccoed, okay? She wasn't asking for four units. So, I don't think it's in the character of the house. I get it's cheaper than putting on new clapboard. I get that. I think one of the things that I fought for, because I know you can't make, keep that a single-family house, but I don't think stucco, we're going to lose all the windows, we're going to lose all the trim, it's going to be PVC, it's not going to be exactly the same. That's what we're going to have to live with. But I think in the, what we planned for this house was to make it look like it's looked only in better shape. And I don't think doing stucco is in keeping with how the house was built. Now, we can't hold you to any kind of historic things because you're not designated, you're not a historic designation. So, I appreciate that you want to make it four units, which is what we said. Make it into something so we can, the town can have the outside of the house. I just don't think that the stucco's in, in keeping with the other houses. Would you like to be heard, ma'am? Stand up and state your name again, please.
It's Ramona Cassis, 41 Maxwell Avenue. So, if you can see the house, the small part is the top. It's green. You can see in the picture.
Okay, guys, you can't keep yelling out, okay?
If you can see in the picture, it's a very small part that is black or green now. So, it's going to be the stucco, the off-white. There's a picture that mine has been showed to Chris, if you want to see it.
I saw the picture.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, again, it's your house, it's, it is their house, they can do with it what they want. I don't think stucco's in, doesn't really go with what we've all looked at from this house for however long we've lived here. There's all kinds of, new boards that are plastic, what's that name of that board? Clapboard?
Hardyboard.
Hardyboard. If there's not that much of it, couldn't we keep some of it? As we're getting all new windows and we're getting PVC trim, we're not keeping any of it.
The trim, the trim off the, 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 the.
Yeah, they're all, they're all PVC.
You said you're taking them off?
They're going to, they're all worn out.
Going to put new ones, same.
Put it in kind, it's replaced in times.
Same guy.
Okay.
The small, the small parts, which are the walls, the paint lots.
Okay, I'm, I'm one voice. I'm one voice. I appreciate that we're not tearing the house down. I appreciate that we're going to do something with it because what we said four years ago was, we would like to be able to see the house. I know I've gotten a lot of calls on the trees. I get it, you have to, some of them are dead. They have, and is this on the website? So, if anybody here is interested in that, the landscape plan is on the town website. They're doing a lot of landscaping. 140 trees you ran up against Charwood, right? Isn't that the line?
On the perimeter of the lot.
So, you'll get to speak. Hold on, I'm going to give, everybody's going to get time to speak, okay? I'm just voicing my opinion. I, I would, I would like it to remain clapboard. I had this fight with Ally 10 years ago, okay? But she wasn't asking for four units. Okay, anybody else on the board before I open up?
Yeah. I'm just curious, have you considered any other material than the stucco?
Yeah. Do you have any other options, like something to show the straight, not?
So, so you're saying you, you did consider other materials? What materials?
Oh.
Hardyboard.
So, so you did consider, and what was the reason for doing the stucco?
Owner preference.
Okay.
Because of the picture. The picture or something similar to that, something like that.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the audience. Everybody, you have to direct it to me, will pick out who will get to answer your question, or I will answer your question. Please stand up, tell us your name and address, and yell. Go.
I'm the first one?
No, sorry. Cheryl, go ahead. Hold on, I'll call on you next. All right, we want you to come to the podium so it can go over TV.
Cheryl, District 6, I'm on the Historic Commission. I remember that meeting four years ago about keeping the integrity of that building intact on the outside. If they put stucco, we're not California, Nevada, Utah, Colorado. We are New England. We use clapboard. You could flip boards around, and then if there's any rotted boards, they could replace those. But a lot of times on an old historic house, they take the clapboard off and they flip them. And if they're just going to replace windows too, are they using the historic correct windows? Not something that looks in kind, the actual historic windows to be replaced with. Because from what I hear, sorry, Deb.
That's okay.
Is any historic value to that house has just been destroyed. That is not an 18 something house. It's been destroyed. Because stucco, it's not New England weather. It's actually harder to maintain. It has a tendency to get moisture behind it, has a tendency to sag and everything else.
I get it, it's personal preference.
It's personal preference.
It's personal preference.
It's their house, I get it, but as a Historic Commission member, I am really disappointed that this is the way that that mansion has gone when it has been a crown jewel in this town all these years, and then just like that, it's gone. Thank you.
I'll let you talk, but we're going to take that lady, come up to the podium, please.
Yes. Even though the speaker doesn't work?
Yeah, but it's got to go on TV so you can see it later.
Oh, great. So, I'm about the house on Fisher.
Name and address, please.
My name is Elizabeth Phillips. I live at 26 Fisher Street. I absolutely love that the trees are down so I can grow a garden. Thank you very much. Isn't Hardyboard a non-stucco surface? They're saying they're putting Hardyboard planking on.
No, they're not.
No, no, they're not.
No, you're not?
Hardyboard would be the replacement for the siding. They, they're preferring the stucco.
Okay. All right. And I do, I've looked at the plans. I think you're doing a great job. I really do love it. I hope it, the only thing that I worry about is, my husband Joe and I were looking at the plans, and it's a low, it's a low zone where things can get flooded in the area, and I saw that you guys have put up for drains. That's, that's my big concern. I really think.
Okay, well, will I have Chris address that?
There is sub-surface, stormwater, sub-surface drainage systems proposed for the new pavement area and trench drainage at the end of the driveway to catch all that water.
The driveway is going to be right near my house with four-car garage, which I'm absolutely happy.
Yeah.
A hot car. But I, I was wondering if you have done studies on the drainage on that to make sure that, like, it doesn't flow over to my house because of new construction?
It's a grass area, and we're, we're catching all the water that's running off of the driveway. The other, the other, that would she flow over, the grass will just absorb into the ground.
Well, yeah, I'm just concerned with all the trees that are down too, because that was helping with the drainage for years. I've been there since 1979. My mother was a realtor. Deb, you knew my mom, Vicki McHan, and she sold it to Bob Agori, and we've been there for.
Well, let me ask, Chris, is, is the garage on a slab or is it on a basement?
Slab.
Okay. So, that's good.
He's got to deal with the runoff if you get, you're, you're putting a drainage system over.
Yeah, on the whole.
Because we're doing more coverage, and we're doing another driveway.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can store a two-inch rainstorm underground. That's what we're proposing on the, on the plans.
And other than the siding, that's, you guys, I'm okay as long as it looks pretty and all cleaned up. Thank you.
Somebody else? Sorry, you got to come to the podium and yell, please.
I don't have a problem with that.
I know that.
I'm a drama, I'm a drama teacher. Stucco is not necessarily in keeping with a Victorian home. And that home, even though it's a mansard, is still a Victorian, which means siding. I have hottieback on my Victorian house. Hottieback will last a lot better than stucco does. The other question I have is, what kind of trees are you putting in there, seeing as you took out trees that were this big around? It's my understanding you've got Alba Vitae up there as a screen?
Green giants, all over there.
Okay, because those, those, those don't live very long. Okay, because those, those, those don't live very long and they don't grow very high.
Did you look at the plan on?
No, I didn't know they were on.
You can pass that around in the crowd. But again.
We've got print.
I know, I can't either.
But what are some of the other trees that are going to be put in besides alba viti?
Marjorie, that's Marjorie. Marjorie Stegman.
Marjorie, can you come online, please?
Yep, I, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, just identify yourself, please, and give us some non-Latin words to trees that you've got there.
Oh, gosh, okay, I'll try. Marjorie Stegman, I am with Creptal Landscaping. So, we have a bunch of deciduous trees that we are going to choose from, to add. So, we've got things like red maples, service berries, red buds, you've got dogwood, and then, and the, for those are all deciduous, we've got different, different American hollies, some red cedar, and the green giants are already there. So, those are the kinds of trees that we're thinking about. We may actually, since a lot of trees were, have been taken down already, we may supplement this list with other natives like oak or, or that sort of, you know, more shade type tree when we get that far. We also have a lot of deciduous and evergreen shrubs, a lot of them are natives. And then our perennial list also includes a lot of natives.
Okay, thank you. Let me make one statement. This is a private piece of property. They can take down or put up whatever they want and we're only here to ask them questions. But they can do this by right because we asked them, if they were not gonna tear down the building, we would give them units inside. So, they can not put up a single tree if they don't want to. It's private property. So, there is a, a good landscape plan and I'm, I'm sure they're going to be good neighbors.
I understand, I understand about that.
And if they like our varieties.
It was devastating to drive by there and see. Going back to the stucco, stucco is more Mediterranean than it is New England.
Thank you. Anybody else interested in speaking on this? Name and address, please, I always forget to ask.
Carrie Rowan, 293 Walpole Street, Norwood. I'm a direct abutter to the property. What is the proposed timeline for the project from start to completion?
Realistically, two to three years.
What are the expected construction hours, the days and time, because now with the landscaping currently going on, it's Saturdays, Sundays, the before hours, the after hours, it goes on at all times.
The town does have rules when they can, what are the hours? Eight to five?
Seven.
Seven?
That could be wrong. That's a course that the board suggests.
Yeah.
Because that's not been happening.
Okay, but you can call on that and all lands, you know, you can call and say there's hours that they're supposed to be doing construction and again, they have to live by that.
Is there gonna be a plan for the demolition such as trash, asbestos abatement, things like that to prevent that stuff from being released from there?
Yes, there will be, it will all be abated as required for, you know, approved asbestos, you know, abaters, abatement companies, dumpsters exposed periodically.
What is the offset from the driveway, the proposed driveway to the fence on that property between my house and Westwood's house?
On Fisher or on Walpole?
On Fisher.
On Fisher.
The setback from the other, from the other property?
It's from the corner of the driveway to the corner of, to the property is, looks like 12 and a half feet and then it opens up all the way down to the corner of the garage, about 34 and a half feet.
Yeah, we need to set back to the five.
And again, with any kind of construction, whether it's a single family or a hundred, a hundred unit building, they have to, they have construction rules, they have times that they have to, if they violate that, you have to call, Norwood Police or Enforcement? Both?
Police or Norwood. So, the Norwood Police offer noise. Any of the more environmental concerns, like concerns about maintenance of the site during construction or demolition, asbestos, that's overseen by the Building Commission. So, calling Building Department would be the first step to requesting enforcement on that. Does the town require a drainage survey for this amount of new construction?
Well, it's, it's really, how many square feet are the five-car garage?
How many square feet is the garage?
Yeah.
Well, there's a garage and an addition as well.
The addition's over the existing structure.
Right, so the footprint's not changing other than the garage, correct?
The, the garage is just under 2,000 square feet. 1,035 square feet, yeah.
But that's not the footprint. So, they're not.
So, this would not, this would not trigger any requirements under the stormwater regulations, but the applicant has provided a stormwater design that would, in essence, come close to meeting those regulations voluntarily. And that's something the board could require as a condition of approval if they chose to approve this special. And how is the demo gonna be managed as far as like getting rid of all of the trash from inside of the property and the demolition? Is that going on dumpsters?
It'll all be going on dumpsters, yes.
And I'm assuming the dumpsters are gonna be behind the house, not in front of it?
They'd probably, they'd probably be on the Fisher Street side, but that new driveway entrance.
Can we ask you not to put the dumpsters on the front?
I'm sorry?
Can we ask you not to put the dumpsters on the front, in the front of the house on Walpole Street?
You could ask, you could ask whatever you want.
No, obviously I can't. Okay.
All right, I think I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else regarding Walpole Street?
I don't know.
Oh. How do I know that they're?
You asked. So, is there anybody online?
Anybody online that wants to speak on this? I can't see their names.
No.
Anybody online? Speak up now, please. Okay, nobody online? Any applicant would like, would you stand up and do the mic?
Deb, what do you think about the brick? Off-white brick instead of the stucco?
She wants to know, hold on, hold on, hold on. She wants to know what we think of off-white brick. I understand and I sympathize that you prefer this look. I'm only speaking for me?
Yeah.
You know what I live in, okay? I live in the same kind of old lady house. And I, I don't like stucco in New England.
Forget about the stucco.
I don't like, I don't want that house to be brick either. I want it to be clapboard. But it, again, guys, it's their property. We asked them to keep it so we could have as much of it as we could.
More New England.
It, the clapboard is more New England.
Our house is great.
So, you've heard the, you've heard the voices? Nobody, nobody else on the board?
No.
Okay.
Wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
I just have.
Can you, can you, and state your name and address, please?
Yes, I have nothing prepared. I am Carol Schroeder, 261 Walpole Street in Norwood. And my question is, does this change the zoning to a commercial rather than private property because it's four units?
No, it's still residential.
It's still residential now. The fact that there will be a master policy for the units, that will be something that will.
It's still residential.
Available? I mean, will they allow, the people that buy the units, will they be allowed to rent the units? Will it be owner occupied? I mean, how is that going to work?
Oh, it's for a case. I sent a case.
Okay, that was a question I was going to ask you that I wrote down. But that doesn't, they're, they're going to make them condos, correct?
Yeah, the option to make condos.
Okay. They're saying life changes. They're saying now they're gonna use it for a family home, but that doesn't mean they have to do that later on.
Oh, I thought it was condos.
They're going, you're gonna make it separate units, separate egress and?
That's how it's gonna be constructed.
It's gonna be set up. And then, right now, they're saying they're gonna use it for family, but they don't have to. They can sell those as units. Now, whether they're gonna have, whatever their condo association is going to say is not up to us as a board to tell them what they can and can't do with their condo association. So, they have to live by the regulations of the state?
Okay, I was, I'm sorry, I thought that they were going to be four condo units, at which point I would say, would we have availability to see the bylaws, to see how the units would be controlled? Would it be owner occupied or rental? Do you know what I mean? Like, you could have people coming and going, is it gonna turn into an Airbnb because it was a historical property? Well, I'm just asking.
But they're, they are allowed to do that also. They have to live by the Airbnb rules. I, I get what you're going for.
I understand. We lived in Westwood for a very long time and they're extremely strict. We have a very large property on Clapboard Tree Street, which we subdivided again. We had to replace, for every tree we took down, we had to replace.
Unfortunately, we are not Westwood.
Right, unfortunately. Thank you.
Would you like to have, are you all set? You sure? Okay. Again, we're, we're voting on, what specifically are we voting on?
So, you're voting on a special permit under bylaw section 3.6, but you would first need to entertain a motion to close.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Make a motion to close.
Before you close.
Are you closing or you have a question?
No, before you close, I'd like to.
Okay.
So, I understand, I, I also don't, I'm not a fan of the stucco, but I understand it's your, it's your dime. I also understand clapboards in New England are, they just, they just rot quick as, they just get moisture behind them, I get it. Hotty plank, not a bad option, whatever. I would, I would like you to consider another option. Obviously, we can't make you, we're not the, the stucco police yet. And that being said, I would like you to consider it. But I do appreciate the fact that you're at least maintaining it. The other option here would be that they could take it, raise this house and put up, you know, three or four, whatever, single-family homes or something else. So, I appreciate the fact that you're doing your best to maintain it, the look of it, I, I get it. So, that's, that's all. I mean, I'd just like you to consider other options.
Yeah.
But that, again, it's, it's your dime.
Anybody else before we close the public hearing? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the public hearing is closed. What that means, that we cannot take any more questions from either side. Okay? All right. Are we moving to a vote? Are we moving? Anybody wanna make a motion on 289 Walpole Street? I can't make the motion, gentlemen.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Do you approve the standard conditions? Or is it?
Your insurance says.
I don't know what I'm saying.
Read through, read through. Okay.
If there's anything you want to.
Has the applicant seen the proposed conditions?
Have you seen the proposed conditions, Chris?
Oh, from the, what, yes, I have.
Anything on there that you're not?
We might as well read through.
Yeah, I'm gonna put that in last.
So, my motion would be to approve with the conditions as set forth in the Planning Department's memorandum. And we're adding that the dumpsters be located on the Fisher Street side of the property during construction.
Okay.
Second.
Quiet, please.
Second.
Derek, let me yell at him, please.
With the, we're adding the condition that we're leaving, we're gonna have the dumpsters not in the front.
Yep.
Okay. So, there is 10 conditions of approval and you've looked at all of them. Everybody on the board good with that? We're only adding no dumpsters on Walpole Street. And we're, and we're all asking for no stucco. But we can't put that in there. I belabor, I know. You know where to find me. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you have unanimous vote. Okay.
Thank you.
Because she's an old lady, doesn't mean it's a bad thing, okay? Old ladies have their place too. 55 Lennox Street. You're reading the public notice?
Yes.
Guys, when you leave, please talk quiet, or talk, when you get outside, please. Rob's, yeah, Rob's gonna read in the public notice, 55 Lennox Street.
All right. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Board of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on June 30th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the request of Lennox Street, I'm sorry, at the request of Lennox LLC regarding property located at 55 Lennox Street, Map 4, Block 2A, Lots 2 and 4, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the Central Business, Business Zoning District and MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, Norwood Depot. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will be, will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to Section 9.5.6.B, bonuses, stormwater and heat island bonus of the Norwood zoning bylaw for one story of additional building height in exchange for enhanced storage and treatment of stormwater runoff and heat mitigation. The board will also conduct site plan review pursuant to Section 10.5 for redevelopment of the property for multifamily housing with associated landscaping and parking area improvements. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Written materials from the public may be submitted to the board by emailing comdev@norwoodmass.gov no later than noon on the third business day before the hearing. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Planning Board and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodmass.gov or by calling 781-762-1240, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Okay, and who's presenting? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John. I'm the owner of 55 Lennox Street. Born and raised in Norwood, have my business in Norwood and excited to get this project going. I wanted to thank everyone for having us tonight, the Planning Board, Madam Chair, thank you for having us out tonight. No one loves Norwood more than me. My grandma was born here, I was born here, my mother. We're passionate about the project, we're excited to show all you guys tonight. And I'm gonna turn it over to Scott to have us get started. Thank you all.
For the record, I'm Scott Henderson of Henderson Consulting Services. I'm a project civil engineer. I'm gonna start by going over some of the site conditions, the general overview of the property, and then I'll turn it over to our architect who will talk in more detail about the building itself. 55 Lennox Street is on the west side of Lennox. It abuts a DPW building to the north, the MBTA railroad to the west. Rockland Trust Bank is directly south at the intersection. And then across the street, across Lennox, is the Lennox Village Multifamily Development. So, 37,000 square foot site, give or take, in the Central Business Zoning District. As was stated in the advertisement, it's also in the MBTA Multifamily Overlay District in the Norwood Depot Sub-District of that overlay. The site's currently developed with two commercial buildings, car storage and there's an auto body facility there. It's mostly paved, there's some overgrown area at the. It's mostly paved, there's some overgrown area at the rear of the site butting the railroad, but in general, it's pretty open. It's basically a parking lot with the two buildings. And worth note, in general, stormwater runoff flows either directly from the site onto the Lennox Street right of way, or there's a catch basin on the property that collects runoff and a good portion of that is directly connected to the municipal drainage system. That's something worth remembering when I get into the proposed conditions. The proposal is to construct a five-story, 96-unit apartment building. That floor plate is 24,388 square feet, give or take. And it's generally a U-shaped building, with the opening of that U facing Lennox. That central area is sort of an entry, and then there'll be pedestal construction on either side, where you'll have surface parking underneath the sides of the building at the first floor grade. In terms of parking access, there are three curb cuts. You'll have the two covered parking areas on the sides of the building. And that central courtyard is the guest parking and loading zone. There'll be, I think, plans here.
Would it help if you had the podium so you didn't have to hold the mic?
But then no one can hear me. I figured I'd stand over.
No, that's good. If we, no, if we move it over there?
Drag the podium over, no, it's fine.
Okay.
I can't see.
Okay, hold on. If you want to see the screen, guys, if you quietly stand over there, because it's got to go on TV. So, if you stand over there, you can see the screen.
This is the layout sheet. I'll back up a little bit, so, you know, front's on Lennox Street. It's a U-shaped building. The central area is the main access, pedestrian and occupant access. And then on the sides, it shows parking here, but that's on the surface lot. There's four stories of structure above that. There's a curb cut on each end of the property to access that covered parking. And then visitor parking is in the center. There's a central courtyard here. We have walkways that connect to the sidewalk for pedestrian access in the front, fully ADA compliant, and we have landscaping along the front of the property. In terms of utilities, it's all fairly straightforward. Most of the site is building, so a lot of our stormwater runoff is on the roof. We're capping that runoff via roof leaders. There's a subsurface infiltration system proposed underneath that front parking lot that also captures, treats, and infiltrates runoff from the surface parking lot via trench drain along the frontage. The overflow to that system connects to the same point that the existing drainage connects now. So, we provide that system that abates runoff rates and volumes for all design storms. So, we're improving that runoff condition with the proposed development and that routing that water to the same location it goes now. We've submitted full detailed stormwater calculations that show that.
Then stand over here. Hold on, guys. We can't hear him if you guys interrupt, okay? So, if you, okay, then you got to stand over here.
Come here, the seat's right up front. Right up front.
Come up front.
We have open seats here.
Front and center.
Okay.
So, in summary, the stormwater management that we provided, we submitted calculations in a design that shows compliance with all the town regulations and the state stormwater standards, which is one of the requirements for the additional story that we're requesting as part of the project. Other utilities, very straightforward, sewer, water, electric, all very typical. Again, we've submitted detailed design plans with the application, reviewed by the town engineer, and will have to comply with all those standards when we go pull a building project for the project. Lastly, worth noting is parking. We're proposing 67 parking spaces. The regulations require technically that we provide 106 spaces. However, we're not assigning any of those spaces to residents as a standard for allowing sort of a waiver, requesting a waiver for parking. One of those 60 is a 67.
67?
67. There is also a municipal parking lot within 700 feet of the property around the corner underneath the Hatch Street Bridge. With that, I'll turn over the presentation.
One quick question. Because your bonus is stormwater and heat island, who's going to explain that?
He's going to touch.
This young man right here?
He'll touch on the heat island.
Can I ask him, can you read something?
Not, write it down, you can ask him when we open it up to the audience. Or you can come up here, we have a whole front row of seats. And you're going to speak as loud as you can.
I'm going to try. I think I'll try standing here, and if I'm not talking loud enough, somebody please tell me. Michael McKay, I'm the project architect, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having us. As Scott mentioned, this site plan is a good segue for our building. It's a U-shaped courtyard building. We had some great feedback from the fire department. We redesigned the building and the site completely based on their feedback, so they would have access to the front of the building. So, this design reflects that. If we could go to the next slide, please. Couple more.
Are you looking for the elevations?
Yeah. I can keep going, one more. This, maybe one more. This is the landscape plan that has been developed by.
Somebody didn't listen with the cell phone.
It's not me.
Sorry, I turned it off, I thought.
Cosmos Landscape Architecture has designed the plan. If there's any questions, we can try to answer questions. But as Scott mentioned, we're wrapping the entire property with trees and shrubs, and there's a small amenity space or patio in the back of the building, and that's one of the suggestions that was made at a recent meeting, and we've made that change. Next, please. So, this is a rendering, looking, there's two views that we have. As I mentioned, it's a U-shaped building. There's a garage access, as you can, you may be able to see it right there. That's the one garage. We also have a curb cut in the middle providing access, and then on the opposite wing, there is access. One change that we've made, again, was a suggestion after this rendering was done, there's an opening, and I'll show you in elevation, we've closed off the front. This is another view straight into the courtyard with this U shape. There's a varied, there's a mix of materials. We have, there's hottie clapboard, there's hottie panels. There's a Dr. Maintenance Free Wood type of product that you can see on the top. And it's a stone base. The entire first floor has a stone base with windows and openings, especially at the garage level. So, again, elevations show in detail where we're proposing these materials. Next, please. This is the ground floor plan that shows a little bit of the architecture, just what's happening inside the building. Internal bike storage. We're required to have, I think, 27 to 28 bikes. We have room for upwards to 40 bikes inside. Large package room. Each resident will have a little locker for packages, as that's a major change in our world. Trash room in the back, upper left back rear corner. And then several amenity spaces, meeting rooms, little gym and bath, associated bathrooms. Next, please. Typical floor plan, we don't need to look at all of them. The units, there will be 19 affordable units, IDP units, and they're labeled on this submittal and identified also on the left side. There's a mix of, I'm sorry, I didn't get into the unit mix. 64 one bedrooms, 32 two bedrooms. And the IDP mix is 13 ones and 62.
What does IDP stand for, please?
Inclusionary Development. Somebody help me from. Policy.
Say that again? Inclusionary Development? Policy, okay.
It's an affordable unit. It's basically like the.
It is not low income, it is affordable.
Affordable, that's correct. There's different levels of affordability. Each floor is similar, maybe a little bit different unit mix, but there's also tenant storage on each floor. It's one of the things that we find in these larger buildings, that storage is important, and so we're providing that. We can scroll to the top floor, the roof, I'm sorry. So, one of the things with the heat island, so the roof has a common roof deck. It's accessed by elevators, and the two stairs go to the roof. But the entire roof would be covered with a reflective material. It's a reflective membrane, a white membrane. That's how we get this heat bonus. But on the entire, it's 20, I have the number here somewhere. It's 22,000 square feet of.
That's your heat island bonus?
That's our heat island bonus. And the stormwater is, that Scott has detailed, is eight sheets of detailing that outline the stormwater management. It's a very extensive stormwater program.
Okay, so for, you're the stormwater guy? Oh, okay. So, you're going to have, the heat island bonus is the white on top, but you're going to have use on the roof?
There'll be part of it. That's why I took the 2,200 square feet of roof deck off of that that's covering it. So, there's still, there's still 89% of the roof is white, and not covered by roof deck.
Okay, so the roof deck doesn't have white, but we still meet our criteria with 89%? For the heat? Okay. All right, sorry.
The elevations are labeled each material, but if we go to the next one, please. These are a little bit smaller drawings, but the different colors identify the products that we're proposing, starting at the stone on the bottom, going up to different colors of maintenance-free siding. And some of them are clapboards, some of them are tongue-in-rue. Again, the brown is a timber line, timber line is a maintenance-free siding product. I think the change I also wanted to identify was, on this elevation, the one on the top, the front elevation shows windows, there'll be frosted windows for the garage, to give that more of a solid base at the street. It was a suggestion that was made this recent, I think it was two, a week and a half ago. We made that change, which is the rendering's not as up to date. But that's our presentation.
Is it, the artist's rendering, is that actually what it's going to look like?
It is, other than those two little windows, it's 95% accurate.
So, the finishes, you're telling us?
Yes.
The stone, the clapboard, the cornices?
Yes.
Green cornices?
Yep.
Ins and outs?
Yep.
Not just a flat building?
It's not a flat building. We have bays, and that shows up on the floor plan as well. There's, we have extensive movement in the building. And it's also not just flat at the parable level where we have, you can see, every elevation is developed to be consistent.
I have looked at that extensively, and that's one of the things. But I want to reiterate, we're not getting an artist's rendering, and then we're going to get something completely different.
The drawings here, I stamped the drawings.
Okay.
This is the first level of our construction drawings. We're hoping for great news tonight, and we'll have construction drawings. But, no, the floor plans show, you can see the movement. Wherever there's a bay, it shows in the floor plan. And then the elevation's flat, looks flat, but the rendering shows the movement.
Okay, and in the pictures I see, we've got a setback on the left and the right center, so it gives us a little more interesting definition.
Exactly.
It's not just a flat front.
It's absolutely, the intent was to not be a flat building. And I think the suggestion by the fire department to recess that center area, before it was a U, it was a reverse U. And the fire department, it wasn't a suggestion, they told us.
It was a reverse U?
It was the other way. Instead of the U going towards Lennox, the U was going the other, it was a straight, it was a flat.
Yeah, so the, the U would face the tracks.
Okay.
So, that in itself breaks up the building dramatically. But all those little bays that you see, those U shape on the roof, those are all bumps. Those are all, all ways.
Not an artist's rendering.
It's not an artist's rendering.
Actually, what we will be looking at.
We will definitely be getting this.
Okay. And do we want to go back to stormwater? So we can, because that's one of the criteria, the bonus is the stormwater.
Right.
Can we go back to stormwater?
Can we elaborate?
Please?
Yes.
Thank you. Ready?
Before we elaborate, all right. So, the stormwater management requirements to get that additional bonus are that we have to meet all the state standards in the stormwater management handbook that would typically apply to a project subject to the Wellness Protection Act. It's a very stringent and detailed requirements for addressing stormwater runoff rate and volume for a series of design storms, including a 100-year storm. It's nine inches of rain in 24 hours. So, we have a fairly substantial stormwater system that is highlighted in blue on this plan. We capture runoff from about 100% of the roof. We route it through closed piping underground and into a drywall system located under that central parking lot. Additionally, runoff from that central courtyard area is captured in a trench drain at the threshold of the property, right at that central curb cut, routed into a treatment unit, and then into that same infiltration system. It's sized to ensure that up to and including that 100-year storm, we can capture that water, treat it, contain it, and let it bleed out into the drainage system in the street, where it goes now underground via a pipe in a way that doesn't cause any downstream flooding or any sort of changes to that hydrology or those hydraulics for that drainage system. A very detailed set of drainage calculations was submitted with the application. It was reviewed by the town engineer. There were some comments initially, the initial review. We've tried to address those, and I presume that there will be a condition as part of an approval, presumptive approval here, that I would have to make sure that I meet all those requirements as the town engineer requires.
Okay, question?
Yes.
If this wasn't one of your criteria, which is the MBTA rules that we can't change, how would the water filtration system be different than what you're doing here?
Right, same, right?
You would be following the redevelopment standards in the handbook.
Yes.
Which are different than.
Slightly less stringent standard. So, we would have to go through what's called the redevelopment standard, which should get some related.
If you weren't getting the extra floor?
Correct. But for this one, we're treating it as if it was new development across the board. So, there's a greater treatment requirement for TSS removal, 90%.
What's TSS?
Total Suspended Solids. So, all the grit and grime and stormwater runoff, you have to remove that. So, you have to remove 90% instead of 80. There's a greater requirement to remove phosphorus from that runoff. I think it's 65% instead of 50. And so, in general, we have a more robust system than is required if we weren't looking for that bonus.
Okay. Thank you. Are we getting a land, somebody doing landscaping? Anybody doing landscaping?
I could look at the landscape.
Okay.
I love flowers.
I don't want just flowers.
Right there. So, if you, if you look at the sides of the building, we have arborvitae. The reason for the arborvitae is to have a nice green, line of green on the side of the buildings. What that does is it, you know, adds a nice aesthetic, and it also takes away sort of anything inside from looking out in cars and stuff like that. Along the front of the buildings, we kept all native species in the front at the request of CONCOM and the town. We put the species that were very specific to the regulation. The regulation actually calls for specific native species only. And then the fire department asked us if any species we put along the front for it to be less than eight feet one story, because they want to have their ladders be able to get to the second and third floor, and not to be too high. So, we, along the sides again, is the arborvitae, they're called the, I think, Emerald Golds, the tall, green arborvitae. Along the front, you have some native plants. I could look, get close and list them for you if you want, but. I could look, get close and list them for you if you want, but, oh, you have the planted plant, okay. And then there's two flower beds up here, there's two little flower beds up here. And along the back, you have an area with some larger trees, a patio, some grass. And that literally gives you all four sides of the building covered in landscaping.
What I think I would like to know is what we're looking at in the front of the building. Because unless we're living there, we're probably not going to see the back of the building. So along the sidewalk, I'm asking you a question to which I know the answer.
I have to cite the plan, I don't have the, I don't know the exact, but they're exactly stated on the plans.
So we have some, we're going to leave the sidewalk and put in a new sidewalk, right, Sarah?
Are you asking me to just put in street trees?
Well, I know the answer to that, but yes.
Yeah, yes, we are putting in street trees.
We are putting in street trees.
Correct.
Because again, unless we're living in this building, we're driving by this building, we would like to, we'd like to have it look pretty.
Absolutely, I'm, me as well.
Because I know where your mother is.
And I plant the other sides of town as well, make sure the whole town looks pretty.
So we have granite curb, correct?
Correct, yes.
And we have street trees?
Correct.
And we have eighteen percent, is that, am I doing the right number? Eighteen percent landscaping where only ten is, or green space where ten is required? Is that correct? Open space, sorry, open space?
That's correct.
We have eighteen percent? And that's not including the roof?
No, not including the roof.
And, am I correct, there's two street trees at each cut between the driveway?
The latest planned...
So what's shown in the landscape plan here are the existing street trees, which we're obliged to maintain. We're putting two new street trees on either side of the southern curb cuts, the one...
There's trees there in front of the door with tire?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are, those that was shown there are existing. There are not unflanking the lower curb cut.
And you're leaving those there while you do all this construction?
If we damage them, we're obliged to replace them.
Okay.
But we don't intend to. It's a slab on grade construction, it's on a deep foundation, so the excavation is...
You are capping this lot. There's no basement, there's no nothing, you can't...
There'll be, for elevator bits, it'll be what's required for that. But no, this is a slab on grade construction.
Slab on grade, okay. Okay. Questions from the board? Mr. Sheen, yell out, please.
I had a question about the parking. Can you show me how people get in and out on the plan so we can understand? Is everything underground?
So effectively, everything's at grade. You know, these are garages because they're underneath and inside the building and so like, oh, they're considered a garage. But they're at the same elevation effectively as the street. So you're pulling in, you're not going up or down in any meaningful way. It's effectively level, so you can have, these two curb cuts will enter into the covered parking areas. Handicap spaces in this interior side here, one in the central parking area. But it's like entering a typical parking lot, just a covered garage. The central lot, same thing, it's just a service lot, it's not above the low grade.
So there's nothing off to the left-hand side, there's no open, everything's under the building?
On these two sides, yes, everything's under.
Well, I was just, I was looking at this picture here. And this talks about...
That's the Rockland Trust.
Yeah, that's the Rockland Trust parking lot that you see at the left end of that, right? It's not our property. That's showing that perspective, you can kind of see shaded here, the aerial parking here. There's surface parking for the bank adjacent to our property line, but our property line ends here.
And how do you, there, is it ninety-six units? Or ninety...
Yeah, is that right?
Yes, ninety-six.
And do you limit who can have a car or do they, do you work out something? If you only have sixty-seven parking spaces?
They're unassigned, I'll let them speak to that because they're operating.
Do they come home late at night and they fight over them and...
Well, no, if they're unassigned lot, and a lot of studies been done these days that not everyone has a car. And the, the generational, the younger you are, car ownership's less. So right now, this study's done that only seventy percent of spots are used at an apartment building. So with that, being close to the commuter rail helps, a lot of people will commute to work and not have a car. And then lastly, the bylaw allows if you're within seven-hundred feet of a public lot, you could get a park, a parking spot at the public lot. And this property is less than five-hundred feet, so it falls within that as well.
What parking lot?
So would they be parking overnight at the public lot?
Hold on, hold your questions, please.
If they applied for a permit with the town. So right now, anyone in town can apply for a permit if you're within a certain amount of distance to a public lot. Or you can get a street overnight parking permit as well. They could apply for that as well.
Now, this road is fairly narrow, as I recall. You wouldn't really be parking on that street?
No, they would not.
Never, no.
Nope, they would not.
I mean, you wouldn't fit.
No, correct.
So they'd have to go over to the other lot and park their car?
Exactly.
Ryan, are you done, Joe?
Yeah. I'm just going to follow up on Joe because that was my concern too, when you're asking for sixty-seven spaces. And yes, you can get a permit for the municipal lot, in your case would be the one behind the theater, right?
Correct.
But my, you know, my concern is winter, you know, the, I don't know if they allow those spots open in the, the people who park there in the winter. I'm not sure. You know, because of the overnight parking bans and going in town. That's my only concern is, I get the kids today don't have cars and some people say we're overparked, but you're, it's, you're going almost thirty spots short, right? Ninety-six to sixty-seven is almost thirty, right? Twenty-nine?
Well, they're supposed to have a hundred, they're supposed to have a hundred and six.
Totally hoping they'll be mad at me. But anyway, that's a lot, that's a lot of spaces. You know, five or six, I can live with, but that's a lot. And even if, you know, we used to go one point one per apartment, now it's, you know, one is fine. Just on the parking, to the engineer, what's the parking width of the spaces? Are they eights, eight and halves?
Eight and a half by eighteen and a half.
Eight and a halves, okay, that's good. Because they sometimes go to eight and squeeze them in and it's... That's my only concern is, you're asking for a lot of waiver on the parking. You know, like I said, maybe you'd get five or six people, even people who take the train have a car.
Well, that's it right there, it's a transit-oriented development, so these developments usually do tend to have people that are going on the train to work and not having a car.
And we'll give you credit, you guys tuck this in. You've got five feet of setbacks on both sides. Okay, so you've tucked this thing in, but it is a good-looking building.
Appreciate that, thank you.
If you go, it's not, you know, it's got some character to it and it's a nice-looking building.
That goes back to, I care.
Yeah, no, I, John, I totally understand you don't. All your businesses are good, I'm just concerned about the parking that... I know in the city of Boston, they don't even require parking, you're on your own, but that's a lot to ask. You know, thirty people that hump up to the municipal lot or whatever. So I wish there was a better way to, you know, without knocking a floor off.
I just, it's Michael and Kay again.
And Michael, what's your, just tell us.
I'm the architect. Just in response to the parking, I was the architect for the Guild Street renovation.
They say Gild. They don't know where Guild Street is, it's Gild.
Is it Gild?
Yes.
Gild. I worked on it for two years.
I'm still working.
To me.
What renovation?
It was the, when it went from the printing.
Oh, really?
The print shop.
Print shop, yeah.
That was redeveloped as forty residential units.
I think the MBTA parking lot right next to it.
MBTA parking lot's right next door.
Yeah.
So we had twelve spaces.
And you had parking across the street as well.
And I always say, I get accused of anecdotal, this is not a fact, this is just anecdotal. I always ask the question after, who has cars? The people who live in these, these are apartments, not condominiums. If this were condominium, this would not, this would not be a conversation. But rental, people do not have cars. That's just the way it is, it's a, this is downtown Norwood, which is, you know, like in West Roxbury, there's no commuter. There's no way to, so in West Roxbury, we need one-to-one, but this isn't the, that's all I'm saying. Again, just making a point.
West Roxbury has two train stations.
Not where, I have a project.
Get rid of the bike lane.
Well, they do where I have a house, so there are trains.
Joe? Just to follow up on that, is that, that particular lot, that public lot is extremely busy. I know that people want to go down and use the rec center, you know, they go down there for class, they're, it's tough to find a space. If the theater's in business that night, it's tough to find a space. Bowling ever makes a comeback or whatever goes in there, that used to take up a lot of space before. And that's where the kids do their fundraising, with their washing the cars, you see them out there. It's an extremely busy lot, so I, we're running out of space, public parking. And I know that some of the other places that we've dealt with, they, one of the options was to do it, you said you can apply for a permit to park your car overnight and you do pay for it. I guess the question is, who's got, who pays for it? Who's, who are the lucky ones that get that if you have more people with more cars than spaces in your development?
We would, we would do it on a first come, first served, and if we see that, it's a market thing. If someone comes here and requests a spot for their car, we can't satisfy that and they go somewhere else. They'll go to a different unit. It's all, it's like, it's like going to a place that can't satisfy your needs, you can't go to that business. You have to go to a different apartment building, so...
It's what the market will bear.
It's what the market, what the market will bring to us.
Anybody else, you said, Joe?
Well, I just would rather avoid that. I didn't know if you, as you were renting, do you say, hey, do you have a car? We're all, we can't rent to you because you have a car, you have no place to put.
Right, but that's what you do in Boston or West Roxbury? You lose the tenant, go ahead.
Oh, no, I mean, oh, no. Well, for my part, I think it was Ernie said, I really do like the aesthetics of this project. These things tend to look an awful lot alike if you drive around South Boston and stuff. This one seems to have some, it's attractive. I'm not as worried about the parking, really, I do believe that the market would, is going to be reflective of what you need. And it sounds like you've done your research. And I don't think that necessarily somebody's going to come and rent an apartment and then have no concept of where they're going to park. Like, I would think that they would go elsewhere. The renderings, can you see the cars through the first floor garage? Are those openings, do they reveal automobiles or is there some sort of screen?
The change in the rendering from the elevation is the front, Lennox Street and wrapping around the corner, both corners will be closed in.
All right, so you're not going to see cars underneath?
You will not see it from the street and the corner. It does open up as you go further back.
Okay.
It does open up.
And I don't think, I mean, being that we're talking, the parking isn't a premium. That courtyard is pretty much all pavement, there's no, there's no real room for greenery in there?
There's also a turnaround for Uber or Lyft, it's a turnaround area of drop-off there. So that's one of the things that, we lost a couple of spaces.
So clearly, the fire department has made their, given you the input, but you have a five-foot setback around the perimeter of the building?
Yes.
And if there were, is there any vehicular access for nowhere except for the courtyard, right?
There's parking lots on both sides.
With a fire truck.
For a fire truck.
Yeah.
But it's also a fully sprinkled building.
Yes.
You know, we, it meets code as it was, but it was a strong suggestion, that's why we redesigned it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob?
I kind of, I'm going to echo what Brian just said. It's a, I like the building as, for what it is. Personally, I'm still skeptical about people not driving, not being interested in cars, but maybe I'm just old.
No, I hear the young one.
I know we shot a little high when we wrote the MBTA parking requirement by law part, I think, well...
One point eight, one point six?
One point one. I think for reasons that, for myself, that I was skeptical about the parking information we were getting, that people weren't driving cars, people weren't... I think that's a whole broader subject of whether the density and these newer developments and the MBTA is a really positive thing for a town. You know, that's kind of a bigger conversation that you could have. But anyway, for this project, I think it's a good-looking project. I, the five-foot setback is, you really got it in there. I didn't even think of fire access. I mean, you could say either property on both sides could be developed to the same extent and now you have no access to the back of any of those buildings. But I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, for what it is, it's a great-looking building. I like how, I like the detail, I like the change in plain, I like the different colors. I like the horseshoe shape, I like the courtyard style. It's attractive. It's, it's just funny where we seem to be changing as a town, you know? That's all I got.
Okay. Are the parking, of the sixty-seven parking spots, is the courtyard counted in those sixty-seven?
Yes.
And I don't love that there's not enough parking, but it's not in a residential district, so they're not going to be spilling out into the next guy's driveway. Also, if you don't have a parking spot for him and they have a car, they're just not going to rent. So I, that's my feeling on it, I think we're overparked. There is no street parking on Lennox, correct?
Correct.
And the courtyard is covered or no?
No.
Okay. And are you going to have a live-in super? Are you giving somebody an apartment to run the building?
Management-wise?
Management, management company, something?
Leave towards no, their office is in Norwood, but we haven't decided that yet.
Okay. And where is the garbage storage, just in the bin room inside?
Back, back left corner of the aisle.
Right, but there's not going to be, you don't have any room for any garbage outside? So your, the garbage is included in the pickup? And there's no, there's not going to be anything in the courtyard, I mean, you have five feet, you don't have room for garbage cans? And we are not, we are getting actual, not an artist's rendering?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any, I'm going to open it up to the public, please stand up and speak loudly?
Debbie?
What?
I'm still here.
Oh, sorry. Rob was blacking it, hold on.
Yeah, so before it opens up to there, yeah, I like the building too. Having the issue having to do with the parking, I think we overpark. I don't think it's a big issue. And again, like you pointed out, it's going to be in the market, all right? It'll end up being near loss if you end up losing people. I think it's fine, I think there's enough accessibility around that you can get to. But that's me, I mean, I got my driver's license when I was eighteen, my mother forced me because she ran me out of the house. Then she complained because I never called.
Don't think on your mother.
The roof and everything, great that you're doing the white BBC, we need more of that. Also, it says that it's solar-ready. Are you planning or just have it as an option to do the solar panels?
Not planning now, but technology tomorrow could be one panel powered the whole building. So we want to make sure it's ready in case technology changes.
Okay, for structure and the connection and so forth?
Absolutely.
Having to do with the courtyard and drainage, is there any consideration of permeable surface? You know what I'm getting to?
We did look at low-impact development, stormwater in general. For the parking area out front and for those, those walkways that connect us from the front to the sidewalk, permeable pavers sometimes can be problematic in a scenario where they have to be maintained aggressively in the winter.
Right.
ADA access, you got to make sure, especially for so many tenants, it has to be ice-free and clear right away. No matter what you put for operation and maintenance guidelines, you get salting and sanding.
Yes.
It makes those less effective.
There's an asphalt. I forgot the name of it, but it drains really quick rather than kind of having it runoff in the sheet flow.
You can do permeable asphalt in that regard. It's just a specific mix of standard asphalt. And it drains into the ground below. The issue is when you have that sanded and salted or somebody comes in, it clogs those pores and it fails to operate. So even if you had that in place, you'd want closed drainage, the same system.
After the first winter, it's done. You waste it.
Not necessarily, but requires vacuuming and a lot of maintenance. In terms of how much area you have and the benefit you get, it's not like we have a huge parking lot that needs to be maintained in that stormwater system. So it seemed like not as cost-effective. We would still put in the same closed drainage to prepare for the scenario where that pavement were filled. Other things we looked at, things like rain gardens and some of those other surface stormwater features require a lot more green space, a lot of footprint. Things like tree box filters actually have quite a big concrete apron around them because it's a structure that captures stormwater, sort of countermeasure. It ends up taking away some of that green space, the little that we have. So we did consider low-impact development. It just didn't seem to fit the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. Now I'm going to open it up to the audience. Mr. Brody had his hand up first. He's very quick with the hand. And we'll hear him loud and clear.
Hi, I'm Steve Brody, 102 Devon Road. Now, I'm also concerned about the parking. But with 96 units and only 67 spaces, and how many people are going to be in each unit? I think it's going to be more than one. So therefore, two cars would probably be required for many of the units. And there's only 67 spaces. Now, the other question I have is according to the bylaw, what is the minimum parking required per the bylaw? I think it's 1.1. And this is less than 1.1. So therefore, the parking is definitely a concern with this new unit. Hey, thank you.
Okay. Cheryl was up next, then you, and then you.
Debbie, can I say something really quick?
Yep.
As a reminder, this microphone is only for the TV. It is not amplified anywhere. Okay? Just a reminder.
Cheryl Doyle, District 6, 12 Southern Street. I have a problem with parking too. Because the first thing out of the gate, they said, "Well, we have a municipal parking lot." It's not fair for the residents that live in this town for any of that parking to be used up for somebody that's developing a piece of property for apartments for profit. The taxpayers pay for those parking lots to get resurfaced. There's a bunch of businesses that are downtown that rely on those municipal parking for their customers because parking is always limited on the streets. And during the summertime, it's even more limited because we're fortunate enough, could be nothing, but Central Street is closed off in that section to make it more community. So I think you really need to look hard at the parking. And I don't think it should be dumped to the town for us to be picking it up for an apartment building. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair to taxpayers or anything else. So I think it's a really, really big concern. Because once you start losing that downtown parking for the businesses, you're going to start seeing people close up shop, and they're going to go to another town.
I understand your concern. I think that... I'm going to throw this out here, and anybody young's going to freak out. But if they can't get a parking spot someplace closer than that municipal building, they're not going to rent this building. I just don't... They're not going to walk all that way. I don't disagree with the applicant. Okay, Ernie gets to go next.
On that point, I don't disagree with you on the municipal parking lot. Unfortunately, this board is not... That argument is for probably the Board of Selectmen to look at that policy and change it. Unfortunately, this board is... Does not handle... You know, we can't change that policy as far as issuing permits. That is not the purview of this board. So I agree with you that... I agree with you on municipal parking lots, but we can't... As long as they can still apply, that's an issue for a different board to reevaluate or handle. I don't disagree with your argument. But to Debbie's point, that would... The market, you know... Again, I had concerns on parking, but the market will bear it. If somebody has a car and they don't have a spot for them, and they... The town won't let them have a permit or whatever, they're not going to go there. They're not going to be there. They're going to go someplace else. And that's a risk that the applicant takes in either accepting or turning away a tenant.
Can I follow up, please?
Yep.
Can you guys put it as a condition that they're not to advertise that there's municipal parking as part of their sales pitch to rent?
I don't think we can do that.
Do that as a condition.
Because there's still...
The first thing they said was, "We have a municipal parking lot across the corner." That was the sales pitch.
Right. But they're also going to be a member of the town. Their tenants are... Have the right to use. I don't disagree with you. I think there's not enough parking spots here. But this MBTA thing is something we have to swallow. And, you know, it's...
I don't think that this board can make that condition.
Can you give the... Debbie, please, could you give the selectmen heads up that they might be getting more requests? Because right now, they only get five, about five, six requests. And it's normally during the wintertime when the parking ban comes into effect. Thank you.
And I think anybody here that would be interested in that should call their selectmen. That young lady with the glasses was next. I said, "Yeah."
Hi. My name is Mary Coughlin. I live at 1 Lennox Street. I'm a townie. My dad was a townie. I have seen a lot of changes in this town. This is one of the worst, and I have a lot of questions. The first one is according to the zoning bylaws, page 40, number 14, for fire apparatus, where emergency access is required, not less than 15 feet of unobstructed width must be provided. I can't see from any of the drawings the width of the driveways on either side of the building.
Can I ask you, is that waived because of the MBTA?
So, no. But the fire department's reviewed these plans, and their adequate access is from Lennox Street. That's why they were particular about the types of plantings that would go in front of the building because they wanted to make sure they could preserve their access for the ladders to get to the structure from Lennox Street.
So if there's a fire in the back of the building, what do they do?
Ladder truck.
I can't speak for the fire department, but they reviewed the plans and they found these to be...
Okay. That was the first thing. On page 69 of the special regulations, hold on, special permit determinations. Number two, produce noise, dust, or other effects observable in the lot lines. One of the issues that's always been a problem with people building in our area is mice.
Where are you? You said you're 1 Lennox?
I'm on 1 Lennox Street.
Tell me where that is.
The town... The condos, and there's townhouses in front.
Right across the street from where this is going to be.
I'm right next door to the garage, the Public Works Garage. Okay?
Okay.
When Concanons was built, the two apartment buildings beside them, they had to get special mice treatment because they were inundated with mice. So I hope there's something in effect for us to mitigate this mice problem.
I think we have to wait till they're built to worry about the mice.
We'll see.
Can you reply as a condition of the...
Okay.
What?
...a mitigation strategy could be part of their pre-construction?
Pre-construction or after-construction?
I mean, this board is... Not after-construction. We're concerned about growth during construction. That's a common condition to ask for it.
Rowan mitigation?
Taken during.
Okay.
Okay.
We're okay to run mitigation during the project.
You'll have to. It's not up for debate. You'll have to. Okay. On page 134, dimensional standards, maximum building height for the Norwood Depot substate... Subdistrict is 44 feet. The maximum building height in stories is four.
Right. This is an MBTA community where they're asking... They're giving us two bonus stormwater and heat island bonus.
And I will get to that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. And then the off-street parking we were talking about at the 1.1, you know what's going to happen? The 14 visitors parking spaces, they'll be taken up by the people living in the building.
Yep.
My words. Okay. Now, the stormwater management and heat bonus, and heat impact bonus. You paint your roof white, and you're allowed to build another story?
I don't make the state rules, but that's how you read it. Yeah.
Okay. Install a vegetated or green roof over 50% of the roof area. Use diffuse highly reflective materials, 75% of the roof area, open space. And for that, they can build another floor. Seems to me the state would give reimbursements or incentives for people to follow these environmental issues.
Is that a question?
Okay.
That's what...
Now, let's talk about density. Hold on. This was... We were given last year, two years ago, from the MBTA.
Okay.
Okay? On page 11, Norwood's existing conditions, housing units, and demographics. Overall, residential density is higher than adjacent communities, as it is.
Yep.
Okay. Near us on Lennox Street, we have Norwood Crossing with 105 units. Lennox Station has 47 units and five townhouses. The townhouses at Concanons has 17 townhouses. 48 Lennox is two apartment buildings with 30 apartments. Avalon, the monolith, has 198 units, and the Print Lofts has 46 units. That's pretty dense for a town. And my last thing is, I have two other things, and I'll name some things. Norwood Crossing, the asphalt plant, the Avalon property, the skating rink, the woods being torn down there, the Route 1 ramp, and the Dempsey property. And all of those, the developer won over the people in the area. So my bottom line is, when they start building this that they're not supposed to, or they get the extra story, who do we contact to stop this?
Your enforcement officer.
Who's the... In the police department?
No.
Or are they going to say it's not civil?
To stop what? I'm sorry. The construction of it?
Norwood Crossing was supposed to be a three-story building. They put a garage in the first level, and then they built it up to three floors. So it was technically four stories.
But that was the...
The town only had to... The developer only had to buy one small bus for the senior center once.
Right.
But that was built, and no one stopped. No one... At Dempsey's, which is coming on right now, they were supposed to keep 20 feet of trees over the property lines. They clear-cut to the property lines. So when things like this happen, who can we go to to stop it before it's totally built?
The building inspector.
Well, going back to the Norwood Crossing, that goes back, I believe, the Board of Selectmen 30 years ago, whatever, when that was built. That was a Board of Selectmen or...
It was still... It was still built beyond what they were permitted to do in the beginning.
They were given by somebody back then, not this board, but somebody back then gave them permission to do it.
Well, I, for one, think this is a very selfish piece of property right now for this...
My only... I'm just going to say that we cannot stop the project. We cannot deny his ability to do this project. Town meeting, town meeting, by about a two-thirds vote, voted in favor of the 3A...
MBTA.
MBTA zoning.
Right.
So town meeting approved this, and by that vote, gave these developers the ability to do this.
To do car slouch.
To... Not cop-lash, but to the ability to do it. So we can't say, whatever anybody's personal opinion is, that we don't like apartments, or we don't want apartments, or...
I never said that.
It's not... Town meeting approved this. Okay? So it is our job to make it the best project it can be within the bylaws or the laws of the town.
It's also a mandate from the state.
Well, that's the whole 3A thing. That's the whole thing.
Right.
But, yeah, we can't say...
Or within limits. But then, what the MBTA said is going against what you people want to allow here.
Well, no, 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 no. Again, town meeting voted on this.
Okay.
And one of the bonuses that town meeting by a two-thirds vote voted in favor of was these bonuses. Okay? We can agree with them or disagree with them. It doesn't... It's our own personal... It's what town meeting voted, and they voted to allow these bonuses. So they have that, you know, right to go for one of these bonuses. Our job is to see if they meet the standards for the bonus. We can't just say, "I don't like the fifth floor, so I'm doing away with it." Well, that's not... I'm breaking... I'm going against the law of what town meeting acts it was allowed.
Think about this then. They want to add a sixth floor. That's another 24 units.
They cannot go a sixth floor. They can't.
They're proposing five.
They're proposing five.
What? Okay. All right. That's good. So at least what they're showing in the plan...
And that's it. They cannot... You can't go double bonus and keep going on. You can't.
Okay.
And just so you have some understanding, the plans that the planning board approves, not specific to this application, but any application, the approval is contingent on a specific set of plans that are stamped by the registered professionals over there. And when the building commissioner grants a building permit, they look back to the plan that was referenced by this board and makes sure that what's getting constructed is exactly what was approved, right down to the finishes, right? We go out and make sure that everything is exactly as was approved by the planning board. So I wasn't here 30 years ago. I can't speak to that process. But I can tell you now, and hope to give you some confidence, that when the board approves a particular plan, that is what is permitted to be constructed. And if an applicant wants to construct something different, they usually have to return to the board and ask for a modification of their approval. And everybody gets noticed again, and we go through the same...
By the way, the notice was only a week, and I know one or better that they didn't get the notice.
Welcome to the lot of Parkers.
Yes.
One... I have a question. They're asking for relief on parking, correct? And if we were not to give them the relief on the parking, they can't go ahead with their project?
They probably have to go back to the driving board and see if they can come up with something.
Okay. Okay. Questions? You done?
My final comment, if this goes through the way it's planned with very skinny roads are out of the driveways and everything, we're going to be calling it developer's greed. Because that's exactly, to my opinion, in my building, and there's quite a few of us here, that's exactly what it is. Create as many units as you can and do as small a space you can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brody, you've already been heard from. This lady here, yes.
Hi. My name's Ellen Corchane, C-O-U-R-C-H-E-N-E, and I live at 60 Lennox Street.
And which building is that?
It's across the street. It's Lennox Village condominiums.
Okay.
And I'm unit 14. So we had to look out at the previous building, you know, the building that's there for a long time.
Norwood.
Terrible condition. And then we had to do that when it was empty. And then there were cars all over the place beyond the amount that was allowed, et cetera, et cetera. So we were very happy when we heard that there was some owner, and they were going to do something with the property. As a matter of fact, when I read about the MBTA communities, I liked it. I felt it was being neighbors to our... I felt it was being neighbors to our whole community and to being resident in Massachusetts. I was proud that Norwood was participating in it myself. And so, when I saw that, I called, and I don't know if I spoke to you, but I spoke to someone and said, you know, have you heard about that? The spot across the street at 55 is empty, have you thought about that? So, anyway, I was, you know, pretty interested. I was happy when I got the notice, and I went down and I looked at all the renderings. And I was also concerned that 96 units, it seemed like a lot, but I was concerned about the parking. And I do need to add that I wrote around a bit today, and there was a sign in the Village Parking, whatever the name is across, you know...
What, where's Village Parking?
Well, I'm just calling it that. What's the, the parking, the big parking lot behind...
Behind the theater?
Behind the theater.
What is it called? Ernie, what's it called?
Municipal.
Municipal Park.
There was a sign that says, "No parking, not 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM."
Right.
So, I don't know. I mean, that is obviously...
They can get, they can apply for permits from the selectmen, right?
So they can park there between 2:00 and 5:00?
Yes.
It's up to the selectmen.
So that's an unknown. Now, in terms of that middle part, that's included in the 90, in the 67. But that also includes, from what I understand, what they told me, was that that included charging, also electric cars. Is that correct? So, it really isn't exactly 65 spots. I mean, it kind of is less, right?
No, people will park in that spot, plug their charger overnight, that'd be their spot.
Oh, oh, okay. All right, I, I agree with everyone else that I find, find it hard to understand. And I do think that, for example, how do you get to Coles? How do you get to Home Depot? How do you get to where we live without a car? You can take a bus, but there's a long walk. I relatives in Westwood, on the west part of it, there's no way to get there with public transportation. So, you know, I think some of these plans are based around areas that have a lot more transportation. So, I am concerned about that. On the other hand, I thought, and maybe I misunderstand, but I thought that the town was invested in these projects and that they might help. And I was a little disappointed when I was told that you did request if you could use some parking in the parking lot that's at the DPW, not out there, but right next door. And, you know, I live here, and I'm by there all the time, and I don't see many cars in that parking lot at all. But I know that there are three garages. This is the, this is right next door to the property we're talking about. And so I think there are three garages. So I'm, I'm just wondering if anybody could look into this, that there could be parking there without...
There's commercial vehicles going in and out of there. And, and I think that you'd probably get some pushback from some people saying, "This is an MDC lot, this is a private investor. Why is he getting to park in an MDC lot?" Or, not an MDC.
But it also is...
DPW, sorry, I'm getting my letters confused.
Right, because the MBTA community serves as act that, you know, is, is trying to have support for our area that doesn't have enough housing and has some accommodations for things.
I, you can't, you can't get it both ways. We don't have enough housing, we don't have enough parking. Yeah, you may...
Yeah, okay, so, you know, in the parking lot for the trains, if you look across the street, did you look into this at all? There's a lot of parking right by the, the train tracks, and it's...
Which train station are you talking about?
Well, the depot, right where, you know. But so, so, you know, if you're on railroad and the park and the, the train station, the parking lot is there, there's this narrow line where there are a lot of spots for cars. One spot each, and it says, I was looking at it today, it says, "Compact cars only." I don't understand why. There are very rare classes. But I'm just wondering, is there any initiative or incentive or anything from this act for Norwood to be involved in trying to help with parking?
You want, you want his customers, lack of a better word, his tenants, to park where people that are taking the train park?
Well, I was thinking at night, I think that's probably the major problem. Yes, I did think about that, but, you know, anyway.
It's private property, right?
Yeah, I think...
We can't...
I mean, if there's empty, continuously empty spaces at a nearby multifamily housing property, I think that's evidence that our parking requirements historically have required more spaces than are actually needed.
I think she's talking about not, she's talking about MBTA, about the train station now.
Narrow strip on the side of the housing complex, or in the lot.
Excuse me, that, that belongs to the MBTA now. So they, you would pay, you'd pay to park there.
So that's not a town lot, then?
You know, I guess the other issue is that it is true, young people aren't having cars as much, but it is a family project, and there are going to be families there. And it's hard to believe that they would not need cars. Is there anything you can do before they move in to have some kind of, figuring out how those spaces will be used so that they will not be driving around at 10 o'clock at night looking for a space?
I know.
Is there anything you can do that, for example, you know, they pay more money if they have their own spot or something? I would encourage you to think about that, because I think it would enhance the neighborhood.
Okay, we, we only have an hour left, we have another case to hear, so I've heard this young, quick, quick.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Allen, and I live at Lennox Station. So, my questions are, will there be any drilling or blasting in this area?
No.
No, okay. And the other issue is, we did have, when they were building the Norwood DPW a number of years ago, we had a major infestation with mice. And so I'm really hoping that there will be a plan to address that so that, I mean, it took us over a year to get rid of these mice in the building, so...
Absolutely, we'll do motor mitigation on that property this afternoon.
During construction?
Yes.
Okay, we'll put that as a condition.
All right, thank you.
We heard from you guys, anybody else that we haven't heard from?
Say something.
Not on this issue.
Hi, I'm on the other call.
Hold on. Hold on, you're online. I'll hear this lady, and then I'll go to the online. I know, but I, Mr. Brody, I have to hear people that haven't, and we're running out of time.
My name is Natalia World, I reside in 1 Main Street. And my issue is, again, like everybody else's, parking. Because we're talking about just parking people who will be living in a building. What about the visitors? Where the visitors gonna be parking? I'm sure the holiday is coming, all that stuff, winter and stuff like that. Where are they gonna park? Everybody has a family, everybody has a holidays, and they wanna park. Where are they gonna park, I wonder?
Okay, we have somebody online. Is it Peter? No.
No, this is Andrew Jones, I'm at 8 Myrtle Street. I just wanted to speak in favor of allowing them to go through with the parking bonus and get the extra, the lot. We need a lot more housing in Norwood, and we also need this heat island mitigation. I walk to Shaw's every day, and I'm much further away than these apartments are gonna be. You don't really need a car to get around. The Shaw's is a five-minute walk away. The downtown is a five-minute walk away. The commuter rail's a five-minute walk away. You don't even need a bike to live at this place. And it's gonna make these houses more naturally affordable, because people know that they're not getting a parking spot, and they don't have to pay for that parking spot, you know? It's giving more people options to live here, which is what we need. We need more people, more places that are not just for three-bedroom, two-bath houses. We need more places for people that are working in Boston to get where they need to go without contributing to the traffic problem. Everyone concerned about the traffic problem, but then, if you keep building parking, you're just building more traffic problems. If you make everybody bring their cars here, you're making them have to drive into the city instead of letting them choose their route of transportation. So, I am so glad that you're doing that. I do have a couple of questions, whether you looked into possibly leasing parking spots from Shaw's? That's almost always empty. And also, if you, how it worked? Is it included in your lease that you get a spot, or would you be truly first come, first served?
Who wants to answer that? Are they gonna give them a spot in their lease, or is it just first come, first served?
The plan is to do a non-restricted, non-restricted parking plan, and the spot will be in their lease. So they have a spot in their lease, but unrestricted, they can park wherever they want. So, once you hit that maximum capacity, we'll let off the parking anymore, then we'll let off the parking.
So once you've rented out, and if, if it's, if everybody rents a two-bedroom, and your spots fill up immediately because you've given them one spot or two?
Unreserved parking, if you, if you have 60 spots, 60, 70 spots, and you rent 75, not everyone parks at one time, except overnight. So we'll stop at a certain point, and at that point, we can't offer a spot beyond that.
Okay, I still, but, okay, all right. Is that your only question?
Does that mean you, I guess, does that mean you're not gonna fully lease out all those? And then, I guess, what are you gonna do if there's a conflict? If somebody's, you know, if there's, if all the lots are full, but somebody's lease says they get a lot overnight because a bunch of people, you know, were over there? I guess my ask would be that if you do reserve spots, if you're gonna reserve spots for people.
So we're gonna, we're gonna lease out spots. You know, once we're out of spots, we're out of spots. The person that comes here next has to be a non-car tenant.
Oh.
But, but I guess, you know, in the middle of the night, if I'm coming home, and I know that I'm supposed to have a spot in my lease, but then because a whole bunch of people that are not actually permanent are there, you know, how are you gonna address that situation? If I, and I, I have nowhere to park now, even though it's in my lease, right? That's, that's my concern, and why I would ask that you would reserve the spots, so that there's never a risk that somebody is supposed to have a spot, that they don't have to now involve, you know, somebody to mediate this problem, right? Because I'm, I'm, you know, if there's, if all the spots are filled, who are you gonna tow? You can't figure out who to tow, so that you can get a spot, you know?
Yeah, I think we'll have to enforce some sort of towing policy, and a non-permanent person is parking in the lot. Definitely add some sort of policy.
Sounds a little like South Boston to me, but, okay, any, you done? You're all set with questions? On the, Andrew? Yes.
I just wanted to...
Okay, you gotta make them real quick, guys. I, you already heard from your...
This, unfortunately, this, I'm Steve Brody, 102 Devon Road. Unfortunately, this proposal really does not meet the bylaw that we voted on at town meeting. The bylaw specified 1.1 parking per unit.
All right, thank you.
And this does not comply. Therefore, on that basis alone, unfortunately, it's a good project, but unfortunately, this has to be denied. It does not meet the town's bylaw that was voted on.
Okay. I haven't heard from the gentleman in the yellow shirt. Sorry, real quick.
Thank God, Deli, Lennox Street, Norwood. Guys, I really appreciate what you're doing. My thoughts is, this building is way too big for the footprint. There's a lot of issues down there. We have stormwater problems down underneath the bridge. There's a, there's a lot that could fill there with the water. The parking, evidently, it's a big issue. You don't have enough parking for the size of the building. So, maybe you can down, downscale the building and reconfigure it. Ernie, I know you said about the man, the bylaw, but the planning board has to consider every project a different issue. So, I mean, there's, there's a... I know it's a law, but you guys are the ones that can make the decision. We could have 100 people come in here and say they wanna build 3A projects on a, on a postage stamp. And you, sometimes you gotta say, hey, it doesn't fit.
They haven't, no one's taken a vote yet, thank you.
No, I'm just saying. So, consider that, with the water problem down there, you know, the infrastructure down there, it can't take the water. I don't care what they put in for stormwater. It's already a problem down there underneath the bridge. So, you know, maybe you can look at this, another shot in the building up. You guys are young developers, start off small, and then buy another piece of property somewhere and go bigger.
Okay. Get two seconds, is that a repeat of what we've already, because we've already beat the parking to death?
And it has nothing to do with parking.
Okay, quick, quick.
I'm, this is the second or third planning board meeting that I've been, where citizens have not understood what was voted in at town meeting. And I have a serious problem, and I put it in the paper and brought it up many times. The so-called focus groups did not capture everybody in the town.
Well, we gave them...
And I, wait a minute. And, and that was Cross Street.
Sorry.
Also, the State Supreme Court of Massachusetts said that the regulations that the MBTA put together, in particular, our Attorney General, were illegal.
Okay, but we can't...
The regulations had to be aired again through public input. If we based our plan on illegal regulations, it seems to me the planning board needs to revisit the MBTA, advertise it up the wazoo, and get rid of the perks.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna make a motion, a continuance, because we have another...
Hearing, yeah.
Hearing, and...
Okay, I, I agree. A continuance.
I just don't think we're ready to vote tonight, and, and when's the next available time?
July 14th.
July 14th, 7 o'clock here.
Are you going to ask them to make any provisions, or do you just want more time to have a discussion?
I have a couple of things that I would like to ask.
I don't know, I'm not prepared to vote tonight.
No, I'm not, okay, and I'm not either.
I only ask because two weeks isn't enough time to make changes to things. So, if you want them to make changes to things, I'd say a month, but if you just need more time to discuss...
So, Ernie, do you have anything else you want to add to that, or continue?
No, I mean, I, I, I'll ask the applicant, is, I mean, we're pretty much set on the parking the way it is, correct? I mean, there's, so if, two weeks would be, continue for two weeks, because we do wanna get to this next, we have another major project. And when I, I don't think, I'm personally not ready to vote tonight.
Okay.
So I'm gonna ask for a continuance for until July 14th.
Before we vote on that, I wanna throw one thing in. When you said it was the law, the law is 1.1 parking spots per...
The bylaw.
The bylaw, right. You said it was the bylaw.
And they're asking for a waiver.
I understand that.
Which they have that option to do.
But if we don't, I'm concerned about the parking. I get that they're not gonna rent if they don't get a spot, but, like in Boston, we're, we're not Boston. I don't want you using the police to come and say... So, I would like to continue it also in, in him. Okay.
The other thing too, is that the fifth floor makes the project feasible. Residential, residential construction right now is extremely tight. I know people say the developer makes profits a lot, and, and does, you know, these projects for personal gain, which, yes, anything that someone does for, for some sort of gain on a return on investment. But the fifth floor makes it possible. If you knock down the fifth floor, the project dies, it just doesn't happen.
That's not true.
Wait.
That is true.
He's got the floor.
And so, it's, it's one of those things, when, I grew up in this town, and Norwood Tire, I bought my first tire there in 1997. And do you wanna see Mr. Fisk's building sit there, decrepit, and sit in there, mentioned up to an auto dealership? No. We have a housing shortage in the town, there's a housing shortage in the state. Everyone complains on one side of their mouth about extremely high rents. Then the other side of the mouth is saying, "No more development." It's supply and demand. If we don't bring in the state, more housing to the state, rents are gonna stay high. House prices in the street stay extremely high. Hostility's gonna go up, and that's what happened. So, the fifth floor, it's not a profit or greed in a sense, it makes the project developable, it makes it pencil up. And if we don't do that, then the project dies, and it stays a mechanic shop and disappears. And personally, being born and raised in the town, being from the town, I live in the town, I try to be the founder of the town. Everyone that knows me here, you know, I try to be very involved in the community, and do a lot of things for the little league, planting, food pantry, senior center, everything. It's just a better thing for the town. You could say that's selfish and self-serving, it's not, it's just the facts. So, I, I hope that the board hears that and hears me, and thinks about that. But without the fifth floor, the project's dead. It's disappearing, it's gonna be a mechanic shop.
Yes.
Just one quick comment on the parking. When I think of Norwood...
When I think of Norwood Press, of course, they had a parking, they said if we have overflow, we also own the property across the street, and they came out with an idea that you could park there if, if it was necessary. Perhaps if you had some sort of parking agreement as to what you're going to do exactly to limit parking, so that you don't, you only need the 67, that might be something to think about. I don't know what the answer is.
It's a great idea, it's an agreement with someone else.
And perhaps it's part of what you do, and like you said, when you're renting out.
That, that, that's, that's actually, it could be a plan B, but for right now, my personal belief is that, based on the studies in the market, we're not going to need that parking, because people, apartments park at 70%, so there's 100 units, 70 spots. That's where I, we're really sure. I wouldn't build this building if I didn't have some sort of study to say that.
That may be true, but you see a lot of concern here, too, that, that may not be what works here in Norwood at this particular...
Absolutely.
But, and, and if there is overflow, that municipal lot is a bit of a walk, and it's a, it can be a dangerous crossing, unless they walk up where the rec center is, I guess, that's a little safer, but, and not everyone's going to want to walk that every day, at night, if they've got groceries, if they've got, whatever. They like to, like I, we all like to pull into our own driveways, right?
I know, but this can be...
So I'm just thinking, give it some thought.
I actually, I think that, I would commit to this, if we get to a point where we need parking down where the project's built, as a, as, as, just as a businessman, you're going to reach, I'm going to reach out to my neighbors at the Rockland Trust, and I rent a spot there, but I don't think we're going to get there. So I would commit to say that if needs be, we need more parking, I would reach out, but I don't want to permanently sign a lease for parking spots that Jason Watt don't need. That would just be a cost that would...
I don't even know if we can enforce that.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, okay.
So anyway, Madam Chair, make a motion that we continue, because this is...
Yep, okay, you've got a second?
Give them the next second.
Continuance, all in favor?
Aye.
We're going to continue until...
July 14th.
July 14th.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is, and please, quiet on the way out, please, because we got to move on to our next case, which is 85, 55 Lennox Street, special permit? What did I do? Sorry. 25 East Hoyle, special permit? And you got, you have that?
Yes.
And Rob will read that into... Can I ask anyone that's staying to move toward the front? Please?
Give it a minute to clear up.
Yes, well, because then we don't have to yell as much.
Do a big circle for the turn around.
Huh? The people behind him can't hear. So if you're not going to, if you're not going to move up and you can't hear, that's fine, okay? Okay. Rob's going to read.
All right, notice is hereby given that the planning board of the town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on June 30th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at the request of Panther Residential Management regarding property located at 25 East Hoyle Street, map 2, block 3, lot 15, Norwood, Mass. 02062. In the general business zoning district, manufacturing district, and MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, Norwood Central. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 2275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to Section 9.5.6.B bonuses, stormwater and heat island bonus of the Norwood zoning bylaw for one story of additional height in exchange for enhanced storage and treatment of stormwater runoff and heat mitigation. The board will also conduct a site plan review pursuant to Section 10.5 for redevelopment of the property for multifamily housing with associated landscaping and parking area improvements. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Written materials from the public may be submitted to the board by emailing comdev@norwoodmass.gov no later than noon on the third business day before the hearing. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the planning board and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodmass.gov or by calling 781-762-1240, Monday through, through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Rob. Mr. Hearn, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Madam Chair, good evening, members of the board. David Hearn Jr. of Gellman and Cabral at 30 Walpole Street, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I want to introduce some members of the team, I may leave some out, but the principals of this development who are with us this evening, Morgan Bloom of Panther Residential, and Anthony Ilo, who's experienced development in the Boston area. We also have representatives of our engineering firm, Bowler Engineering, and the architectural firm, Mogul. This is a proposal to develop a, thanks, here. This is a proposal to redevelop the property at 25 East Hoyle Street, which, as the legal notice read by Mr. Mambur stated, is partly in the general business zone along East Hoyle Street, and then in a little ways is in the manufacturing zone. It is also in the MBTA overlay district that was created under Section 3A of the Chapter 40A, the amendments that went into effect a couple of years ago, and Town Meeting in March of 2024 overwhelmingly approved the adoption of the MBTA Section 3A overlay districts. This is in the Norwood Central Overlay District or Sub-District under the MB, our MBTA bylaw. Now, Section 9.5 is the section of our bylaw that creates the district. The particular terms of what you have to look at are laid out in the bylaw. They may follow to some extent some of the suggestions of the Executive Office of Housing Living, Living Communities, livable communities, rather, but they were approved by Town Meeting, which is the body that determines our zoning bylaws in accordance with state law, and it was a mandate of sorts that towns had to, and cities had to adopt the MBTA zoning. The bylaw was approved by the Attorney General, and so it became effective, and it is effective separate, I think, from any of the regulations of EOHLC. We follow the rules that were laid out, they're not actually in violation of anything that I believe of EOHLC, but they were approved by the Attorney General, who see approving authority. The proposal for this site, by the way, which has 2.44 acres, is 132 units, 145 parking spaces, so it meets the 1.1 parking space requirement. 20% will be affordable, that also meets the bylaw. We are looking for a special permit relief under Section 9.5.G.6, if you can follow all those points, for the density bonus that would allow a fifth story to be created and constructed as part of the building. And the basis of that is the fact that we will have a roof that will be 75% highly reflective surfaces, as well as we will be complying with the stormwater, the regulations for new development, even though this is a redevelopment project, we will be complying with the stormwater handbook requirements. So, the basic subject that you're considering here, whether to authorize the project. The project cannot be turned down if it's in compliance with the dimensional requirements, and it is. You cannot use the special permit process that formally used to apply to all multifamily projects in this town. You cannot turn it down on that basis. And we're presenting a project, as I said, that is in compliance. So the issue for you is to confirm that we're in compliance under that, and to also look at the criteria for the special permit relief for the density bonus, and see whether we conform to that, and we say we do. Other than that, you're doing site plan approval, which means you can look at different aspects of the project, and certain design aspects, parking, landscaping, and so forth, and impose certain conditions, but none of those can be of the type that would effectively prevent the project from going forward. So we believe this is a very good project, we think this is a very good use of the property, it is convenient to the MBTA Norwood Central Station, just 100 yards away probably from that station. It is going to provide affordable housing, a mix of housing, and it also is right across from where the hospital, if God willing, will someday be reopened. So I really, you know, we're looking at it as a project that we think will satisfy all of your criteria. I want to turn it over, if I could, to Morgan Bloom, who has been sort of the captain of this project going forward, and then we're happy to take questions and have our professionals answer them as much as possible, but we appreciate your time tonight, and appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. As David said, my name's Morgan Bloom, I'm with Panther Residential Management, here with Anthony Ilo. I want to thank the board for having us, and thank Sarah for her help so far. We are excited to be here with, as David said, a project that we think largely satisfies all the requirements that the town is looking for, for an MBTA project. We had an opportunity to meet with various department heads, Fire Department, Police Department, Building Department, DPW, multiple times, to make sure that we were bringing something here that we hope that you would like. So it's late, I'm not going to take up too much more time, but I want to introduce Matt Murva with Bowler Engineering, Matt's our civil engineer. He'll speak first, and then Jeremy Ball with Front Mogul, DeStefano, who's our architect firm, will speak after, and I think Timothy's going to do some stormwater management explanations as well. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. My name's Matt Murva with Bowler, I'm a principal there, I head up our landscape architectural group, and Tim Hayes is with me tonight from Bowler as well, who's a civil engineer. Would you mind flipping to the existing condition slide? So this is just to orient everyone, and I'll, I'll just run through the, the site plan quickly with you, but the red outline shows the, the limits of our property, so there are a few residential uses up along East Hoyle Street, there's some commercial to more of the rear and west of our property, and then to the east is, is parking for the hospital that's across the street. Zooming in on the site here, just to give you a little more context, and as, as Morgan said, we are proposing 132 units on the site. If you flip to the next slide, it should show our rendered site plan over that aerial to give you some context here. So this is a proposed five-story building with two access points off of Hoyle. If you would just scroll a little bit more to the top there, yeah, perfect. So we, we'd enter off East Hoyle Street, you'd be able to come into the site, circulate all the way around to the rear of the property, and then circulate back out. There's also kind of a front drop-off area behind that green court space. That's about a 24-foot wide sort of park-like space out along East Hoyle that will be planted with, with grasses and trees and vegetation to provide some buffering there. But we've accommodated 145 parking spaces on site. We've, we've allowed for five EV-ready stalls. We've provided for, for a loading zone for move-in and move-out, which is down the right-hand side of the building, about halfway back down the building, which corresponds with an egress door that comes right into our elevator core there. So that should give residents easy access for move-in and move-out, and we've also accommodated fire access to the satisfaction of the Fire Department. We had a great meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, running through some of the finer points on the plan. We've provided, provided Fire Department connections both at the front and, and rear of the property off the building, in addition to a fire hydrant at the front corner. The main entrance would be at the front of the site, where I mentioned that drop-off area, but there will also be other egress doors throughout the site. And then in the lower right-hand corner of the building outside, we have an amenity area, which is a spill-out space from an interior amenity area that would have some lawn area, some soft seating, grilling stations, and, and other amenities for, for the residents there. I don't want to take up too much time and get, let Tim talk stormwater really quickly, but we are providing buffering at the perimeter of the property. We're providing a six-foot-high privacy fence up along our butters, really all the way back from Hoyle, all the way back to the, the rear of the property where those commercial buildings are. So that would be a vinyl privacy fence along those edge, edges. From a landscape standpoint, we're providing a mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees, over 50 of those, 250 shrubs, grasses, perennials, ground covers throughout the site. We have a detailed landscape plan and lighting plan that is provided as part of the package as well. Sorry, any questions?
I'm just wondering where that, where you're planting that, just on the exterior, because everything else is building in concrete.
There are, there are some landscape islands, you know, in the corners of the buildings, and then the perimeter, we've got a, you know, six or seven-foot edge, where there'll be some arboribides and shrubs, and then the, the front area is heavily planted as well.
And you are, you need 10% according to the rules?
Yes, we're at 18%.
Okay. I, I misquoted the last property in this one. Okay.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim, just briefly touch on some of the stormwater, because we are seeking that, that bonus as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Tim Hayes from Bowler, civil engineer. Let me go to the next slide here, highlight it. One more, actually. So I'll go through the public infrastructure that we have approached here, and I'll start with the stormwater approach. The site, as you saw today, is generally two commercial buildings up on East Hoyle Street, and then predominantly a parking area. The stormwater runoff is basically untreated and flows in a westerly pattern towards the west side of the site, where there's a DPW easement that contains both a closed pipe structure for about the first half of the north side of the, the west side of the site, and then it daylights about halfway down our site, and becomes a drainage swale all the way down, wrapping the south side of the site. Essentially, all stormwater today runs off into that untreated. Now, as, as we noted earlier, the part of this project is to go for a bonus for the additional story. In order to do that, we provided a stormwater design that is appropriate for a new development, redevelopment here, so it could be redevelopment, that would be smaller systems and smaller water quality. What we have here is basically a, a collection system that starts with roof runoff through closed pipes, over to subsurface infiltration systems, of which we have three, I highlighted those in blue here, there's two on the north side of the site, and one on the south side. For the, for the parking areas, what we have is inlet, catch faces, deep sumps and hoods, those are then piped to water quality units, but then go to the infiltration system, and through those treatment trains, we, we are able to get our, over 90% TSS, which is the total suspended salvage, is the grit, out of, out of the system, out of the stormwater, and then we're also able to provide, I think around 70% phosphorus removal through that process as well. So with those two coupled together, that gives us half the bonus, the other half, Jeremy will speak too, which is the reflective roof piece. Another important part of the stormwater here is that we've, we've met with COMCOM, we've gotten, we've actually submitted a determination of applicability for the drainage swale that is daylighted on the south half of our site here. We got a negative determination, meaning that it's not jurisdictional. We've also met with DPW, planning to...
What does that mean? It's not jurisdictional?
So basically... So basically, we submitted a application to CONCOM and we said, hey, you know, we're not quite sure what's going on here. We don't believe that this swale is jurisdictional, therefore it doesn't have buffer zones, it's not a resource area under the State Well Act or under Norwood's bylaws. They came back and they said, we agree with you. It is not jurisdictional. Therefore, there's no buffer zones and there's no resource area associated with the drainage swale.
It's just a drain.
Exactly. So it only, it only contains stormwater from upstream, doesn't have any natural kind of connections to other hydraulic points.
Is this kind of like the intermittent stream?
No.
We're not talking about intermittent streams or any kind of streams. This point, the negative determination by the conservation commission means that they have no jurisdiction over that.
And the reason I brought that up is because we also are planning to provide a closed pipe section of that drainage swale, picking it up where it's, it's basically a three-by-four conduit. We're going to run that same-sized conduit down and we're going to daylight it off, right at the end of the property. So DPW's on board with that approach. We have some parking that actually would be on top of that future pipe.
Madam Chair, just if I can ask a question, because just on that point that he brought up, on this, guys, I was reading through the material on this swale and, you know, there was some talk in there about, do we, you want to keep it open versus a closed pipe because of flooding and things like that? Closed pipe, it's going to cause more flooding. Open pipe. There was something in there about some kids' play area that they're in the same area and that there's somebody, the neighbors are using your property. Are you planning, and, but that's where that ditch is going? Did I read, I was confused on what was going on there.
Yeah, I mean, David, do you want to take that?
There's some encroachments there.
There are some encroachments by neighbors onto this site. They don't have any right to have that play area on our property. There was a memo, I think, that came from the conservation planner that referred to that and referred to that.
That's probably what I was reading.
But that, I only saw that today and that is, I believe, her opinion, is not the opinion of the conservation commission. As they said, they don't have any claim or jurisdiction over it.
That's what I was reading.
Yeah. So, and on the question of encroachments, we'll have to deal with neighbors on that, but we own that property, they will own that property, yeah.
It seemed to be in the same area and I wasn't quite, it isn't, I wasn't quite sure what was happening with that.
Our preference and that of the DPW is a closed system, not an open swale.
The whole thing.
Oh, so you're going to go closed on that?
Correct. So, you know, about where that cursor is right now goes from...
So that's where I was misinformed, because I just thought you wanted open.
No, no, we would like it closed.
Because of flood, you know, it's, if there's more water and an 18-inch pipe, if you've got a big open space...
I don't agree that the...
All right, maybe I should, I was reading that memo and I was confused. So, we want a closed, we want a closed pipe.
Yeah, we've met with DPW and they're on board with closing the pipes.
Same-sized pipe?
Same-sized pipe, will have the same, you know, capacity as the pipe they have, which is the restriction upstream. And our site, you know, by the nature of going for the bonuses and the stormwater system we're putting in, is actually going to reduce both deep rate of runoff and volume. So there'll be less water coming off our site in the, in the build condition there's today.
Just one last question, Madam Chair, on the stormwater. Lennox Street, will, are we good with the, did Mark weigh in on, I mean, has Lennox Street got the capability to handle any of your runoff? Because there was some, East Oil, East Oil, East Oil, I'm sorry. Because there was some, back when the hospitals being built, those issues on this pipe size and that kind of a thing.
Yeah, our plan is not to tie into East Oil drainage infrastructure.
Not at all, okay.
We'll only be tying into the drainage culvert that runs along the west side of the site.
Oh, all right. So you're not even going to deal with Hoyle?
Because we know it ain't away from that.
Okay. Yeah, because there was an issue on pipe size out there.
And based on the fact that we're providing these large infiltration chambers underground that have the ability to infiltrate, you know, constantly, Berber dues it not runoff, to be honest.
All right, thank you, thank you, Matt.
Okay.
And then quickly on sewer and water, pretty straightforward. We work with an engineer connection for sewer out to East Oil Street, to the 12-inch main in East Oil. And then water, we've worked with both the engineer and Fire Department to provide, you know, enough coverage from hydrants towards FTCs for fire door connections, as well as, you know, domestic in fire suppression for this head. So also connecting that to East Oil Street. And with that, another, Jeremy's going to go for the building.
And you are?
Hi, Madam Chair, I'm Jeremy Baldwin with Moggle De Stefano Architects. So everything that was spoken about before deals with everything mainly horizontal and underground. I'm going to touch on everything that happens vertically. So, just to briefly describe some of the neighborhood you have, or, yeah, if you could go to the site plan, that'd be great, that one right there. Just to orient you on the site, I turned the page counterclockwise from what you were looking at earlier. We have East Oil over there on the left, along with the Norwood Hospital project right across the street. Top of the sheet is where the train tracks are located, just to get you situated on site. And just to speak about a little bit of the aesthetics on the project, we have, like I said, the Norwood project, the Norwood Hospital project right across the street, it's a very modern design. You have the train tracks, you have a little bit of the mixed use coming down East Oil as well. And we'll get into the aesthetics a little bit more in the material palette, but if I could just speak upon a couple of things. We talked about 132 units for a mix of studios, ones and two-bedroom units. We have approximately 4,500 square feet of amenity space. One of the things that we do want to focus on is life safety. This is the big concern. We have Fire Department comments, we've provided additional, where you can see clouded here on the right-hand side of the project, is a Fire Department connection on the right side, as well as a Fire Department connection on the left side. One of the comments from Fire. As well as rooftop access, we've provided a stair all the way to the roof, which is above and beyond code, but that was a request by the Fire Department, along with backup power, lighting on the roof in case the power did go down. Other things that to hit upon, sustainability, you guys in Norwood are specialized opt-in communities, so we are a passive house project effectively. So that requires our building to essentially meet greater air tightness quality, extra insulation, attention to detail on any of our building systems to really mitigate our output on the building.
Special house, did you say?
You're a specialized opt-in community. There's three, essentially three different energy codes in Massachusetts. In Norwood, you have voted in the specialized opt-in portion, which is above and beyond...
Is that like the gold, silver, platinum? Is that the...
If you, it's above and beyond...
Oh, building code, okay, not environmental building.
For the benefit of others, I already familiar with this. Describe more about the passive house.
Passive house, so airtightness. There's qualities that you have to meet for airtightness and thermal bridging. You can't have certain thermal bridging through your building. You have to have focus on the types of energy systems you have in the building, so your mechanical systems, it all balances out. You basically project everything into a model and that model is going to spit you back out numbers to say if you need to go further on your building envelope or come up with better systems for your, basically your mechanical system.
So, does that get checked on, like wiring and plumbing? Do they go in and say, here, you didn't put the right whatever in the walls? Like, a building inspector goes for, before you close the wall, you look at the plumbing? Before you close the wall, the electric inspector comes in? Before you close a wall, is that the same thing?
Not exactly.
Could you say you did this kind of thing and it couldn't be there?
So we have a third party here that would be done through a third-party organization such as FIES and they are a third-party reviewer that you go through quite a bit of scrutiny on what your building systems and your building envelope entails. And it's a pretty extensive process for any developer.
And who does that, they, Sarah or...
No, that is with a third party like FIES. FIES is a passive house certification agency.
Are they international or national organization?
They are within the US, yes. It started overseas, but it is now in the United States. Lastly, accessibility. All these units are fully accessed by an elevator, which is central into the building. And all the units are compliant with 521 CMR in Massachusetts, FHA and ADA. So every unit is fully compliant and adaptable and 5% are group-two usage, which have wall-hung ovens and greater floor space requirements, as well as 2% are hearing and hearing impaired units. Just to look at the ground floor plan here, if you want to go to the next plan, it's a little bit bigger. We're beginned by two different amenity spaces, what you see in that peach color on the left and right. As Matt was speaking about, for the amenity space over on the right, that is which, that is a club room that would essentially spill out towards the grilling and soft seating area that was spoken about. We also have a pet spa, as well as a bike storage room for 32 parking spaces and a small bathroom. And that is accessed also by the back parking lot. Up in the front, we have a fitness center, a lobby lounge, a large package parcel room and a small leasing office, which is, and that is at that turnaround area that we had spoken about where you can have a drop-off area. If you could go to the next one. This is just your typical floor plan, like I said before, twos, ones and studio units throughout, and this is essentially stacked from floors two through five. Here's the roof plan. We have a white membrane roof, which we talked about for the Key Island bonus. We highlighted that approximately 90% of the roof is fully available to that when we're negating the mechanical units. Those mechanical units run down, for lack of a better term, the spine of the building throughout. So they're essentially located so they're more or less screened from the street view. You'd have to be back several hundred feet before you were able to be able to see those mechanical units because of the placement of them.
Are those black boxes? Are those your vents or something or is that just not...
Those different boxes right there are the mechanical units we spoke about.
Okay. And your elevator shaft is...
Right in the middle.
Is only one elevator?
One elevator, that's correct. And then we have the stair access up over to the right of the building on the right side, along with that standby light that was spoken about earlier. Next page. Here's just some elevations. I know they're straight-on, but our building has a lot of jogs to it. It naturally splits it up because of the way that the site is looked, is set up and naturally has that serpentine shape to it. So I know these look flat, but if we could go to the next view, this is probably better to really speak about the massing and the breakup of the materials. So we focused heavily on outdoor space with a lot of these units. We have a variety of different types of balconies. Some project, some actually recess. Then we also have Juliet balconies, as well as patio spaces for some of the ground floor units. So really just trying to focus on variety within the style of units. But also, just speaking aesthetically about how we break down the building and some of the material palette, we have clapboard siding, we have architectural panels and woodlook veneer on the front of the building and also strategically placed at different intervals, more at the, at the areas where we've got entrances around the building to really warm it up.
You have clap, am I looking at the wrong picture?
So that is, we'll get to that right now, if you will.
Am I looking at the wrong picture?
Nope, that is our picture, yeah.
Okay. So there's clapboard in here somewhere?
So the clapboard is in the white areas. I know it might be difficult to see. Not the band that wraps up and around that brown area, but that larger white area, that is the clapboard side. And then we have board and batten, fibers, and then in those darker areas.
You know Stucco?
No, Stucco, no, Stucco.
And is this a balcony, this, this box on the, on the window that, or on the, is that a balcony?
So those are Juliet balconies in the white areas.
Juliet balcony.
Juliet, so it's essentially a door that you can open.
Yeah, it's a door.
Juliet means no balcony.
Yeah.
Just to speak about the, a little bit of the softening of this facade here. So this is your street view right on East Oil. We have, the good part about this building is that it's, the small part of the building is fronted on East Oil. So we, what we did was we also curved that wall to really soften that edge and bring a little bit more warmth to the design where we have the woodlook panels. And we've also recessed the main entrance below that with the, with that lining that you can see in the front. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the board or...
No, I think we're good.
Yes, sir.
I just, a quick question about the number of units of each type. You've got studios and singles and...
I have, if I may, 72 units would be one bedroom, 22 units would be studio and 38 units would be two bedrooms.
Thank you.
And the affordable units are spread around though, so that each category has roughly 20% affordable within those separate categories.
And those affordable units were allocated on our floor plans that were submitted, which they show them all in hatch areas.
And what's the smallest square footage on the unit or the average range for each?
Well, if you consider all of them together, they're approximately 900 square feet per take. If you consider a studio, twos and ones.
Okay. And I think there was some concern about, you were addressing it, about how it's not just one big flat ball. I think some folks looked at the first drawing and thought that that may be the situation. I think someone used the term increased articulation of the, to make it look different. And I know that if you set through the origin, the ones that before you, they had quite a bit of it. But if anyone else has any other questions, I'll let it lay there.
But anybody else on the board? Ernie?
Yeah, the two existing buildings that the businesses that are there are gone. Auto Doctor and I think there's another building.
It will be.
It will be. Right through my car. My, Joe's point, you had a great opportunity here. And my first, honestly, and I don't take this the wrong way, my first impression when I saw the building was this is, it looks like a traveler's insurance building. It looked like an office building. And I'm there, please, don't just throw up, you know, CineBlock office building. So, try, believe me, that, I'm hoping that everything, when it comes built, it's going to look nice. Because I think like Debbie always says, it's what we, people drive by and we see. You know, we don't care what color you paint the homes, you know? But people drive by and they say, boy, that's a good-looking building, or, boy, that's a dump. And, and, and that's what people's opinions are, is what they, you know, curb appeal, you know what I mean? So...
We haven't had any on with regular press.
I like the idea of the little thing in the front and the building's going to be set back so it's not right on oil. I like the idea that it's, you got to drive into it a little bit. I think your landscape in the, in the front, it really looks nice. Maybe you can rent out a couple of those extra parking spaces to the...
Go give them some stone, they'll get them some parking.
I'm going to steal your thunder a little smidge.
Have it, have at it, better you than me.
Other than that, I...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ernie.
No, 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 I was going to, I was going to say, I'm glad the stormwater, you go into the back, because Hoyle Street stormwater was an issue. It was a big issue when the hospital was being built and, you know, there was talk about the size of the pipe and who was going to replace the pipe. It got, you know, so just adding more water, this amount of water up the Hoyle Street would be a real issue. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad to see that one of the more underutilized and unattractive properties. It's begging for, you know, some, some improvement. To, whatever you've been able to do to soften or make whatever you want to describe, the facade, it's a huge building and, you know, it's, it seems that from the East Oil entrance way, that it is attractive, although you'll be able to see this thing from pretty much anywhere around, right? Like, it's, it's not going to be discreet. Is there any, I, I understand the parking and I just, I'll just put this out there. It looks like you're paving literally every square inch of that lot. looks like you're paving literally every square inch of that lot, except for the strip, which, I don't know if there's really anything to be done about it, but that's an awful lot of pavement. So this is just my thought. But beyond that, I really don't have anything to offer. I'm sure you have stuff to say.
So the last project, I thought they were underparked, and here I am, I think you're overparked. Is there a chance we could throw on some more landscaping?
Yes.
Couple islands?
Something.
You know, patio.
Yeah.
Just green space, throw in a couple, you know, break it up, I don't know. There is a lot, and it's our own bylaw, but...
Yeah, one of the things that's kind of odd about this parking issue, we're normally coming in as developers and asking for relief so we can have fewer parking spaces. And the bylaw, as written and approved by town meeting, has a minimum requirement of 1.8 spaces per unit, and a maximum of 1.8, I'm sorry, 1.1, 1.1 minimum, 1.1 maximum. So we hit it on the notes, and that's, we wanted to satisfy the bylaw. So I understand your concern, but if we didn't have this number of spaces for what we proposed to build, we'd be looking for relief on that. And I don't know what can be done. We had to tinker with the spaces as it was to satisfy the fire department as to the moving the trucks around and all that. But, you know, it's, I think everybody would say it's a lot better than what's there now.
Attorney Hearn, I'm just asking, this is hypothetical, and I'm not, we're not like horse trading here. I understand that there's a real value to coming in and not asking for the waiver. Is there truly a perceived need for all those parking spaces, or, I'm just curious, speaking?
Yeah, Morgan Blum again, I could probably speak to it. So, and not to say anything totally against the last applicant and their argument, but, you know, we do feel that there's still a significant need for parking of a building this size.
Doesn't matter who's in front, whoever's in front of us is telling the other side.
We've done a, we've done a study, and we've also, as David said, tried to hit the nail on the head with the 1.1 to 1. If the board, you know, said, could you lose five or six spaces and soften things up with some more landscaping, I think we'd be happy to do that. There's probably a breakpoint where we start to get nervous about not having those spaces for residents and guests. I can't tell you off the top of my head exactly what that number would be, but I think if you, like I said, if you asked us to remove a half a dozen spaces and find some more green space, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, you're going to need some area to pot some snow.
Yeah, we've got some areas identified on it, but we may lose those five or six spaces, like you said, in the winter anyways because of snow, so.
I would feel great about that, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about adding some green.
I agree with that.
I would agree with that, I wouldn't be, I mean, I'm sure I wouldn't be opposed if they wanted to make a green patio, you know, area for their residents or something off the back, and, you know, come up with a number that you feel comfortable with. I mean, it's, let me tell you, it's very rare that we're asking a developer...
And likewise, it's rare that we're...
Attorney Hearn will tell you...
Holding a line on this issue, but, you know, I think the last thing we want to do is be in a position where potential applicants are leaving and renting somewhere else because, you know, they hear that there's not enough parking.
Derek? So, I recall when we were talking about the hospital, and that area that's going to be for the hospital employee parking, right now it's the staging for contractors for whenever they do finish the hospital. Maybe I'll still be alive then. I think Ernie had brought up the history of that, in which it was, what, oil tanks or something? And that, that area next door to your site is essentially capped. And I'm just wondering, where that line is, are you safe? Did you do an environmental assessment?
Yes, we've done A1, we've done GeoTech, we've taken those steps.
Right, so the soil is good?
Yes.
It's not contaminated? It's just over there?
We didn't touch their property.
No, no, I'm talking about yours, and so you're safe, okay. All right. Okay. Ken's concerned.
Okay. We only have a few minutes, so I'm going to go. We do have some design standards in our bylaw for the N B T A property, what are we calling it, 3A? But we do have some design standards. I'm a little verklempt about this, we're jamming both of these properties. The fire department makes us put in a roadway with a hammerhead for one house, but now we're five feet from the sidelines and the fire department is okay with this? But that's a, that's kind of a statement, not a question. Well, the other guy, you're seven feet away.
What's our, I can...
Okay.
Can we go back to that site plan? I can run through...
Okay, but my question is, what if the guy, let's say we're looking at the property where the bins are stored, or whatever that lot is? What if that guy comes and wants to put a development on that property, and you're seven feet from the property?
That's a great question. So we actually have an easement over their property on that side that they can't include.
It's a 20-foot easement from East Oil Street, all the way down about 300 feet to the back of our building, that's a no-build zone.
In the steward lot?
Yes.
Okay.
It benefits both parties, it's a 20-foot wide access easement, basically. So you would never have a building-on-building situation, at least for the first 300 feet, and then...
And how far back do you run?
And then it's only another probably 75 feet from that point to the turnpike.
You guys can relinquish that.
Only one of my snide remarks. I'm going to get to you after I...
It goes all the way down here, so this is a 20-foot buffer easement right here. And then we've got a setback of our own with some landscaping and things like that, so we wouldn't end up building on building.
Okay, so I'm just going to say it because I don't know how to be tactful. This is a giant building now. Your attorney says we can't say no to it, Sarah says we can't say no to it, you're not asking for relief. But we do have design standards. And I went and took some pictures of Westwood that everybody's throwing at us, how come Westwood gets all this pretty stuff and we don't get anything? We don't get a molding, we don't get a, what are you calling it, articulation? No. Front, back, some movement, we don't get cornices, we don't, is this in flavor of the neighborhood? Are we, are, I mean, do we have another building that looks just like...
You're the architect.
Oh, sorry. Do we have another building that looks just like this? I mean, this is in Cambridge, and our design standards say we should do something that is a little more in flavor with, give me a word, somebody give me a word.
Aesthetics of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Some more aesthetics, and you're giving us, you're giving us a big, flat building with no detail. I know those details cost money.
I'm Tom Blazek.
Wait a minute now, tank. You know, I know they cost money, and I know that we can't say no for a 15% increase on drainage, however...
So, yeah, just to speak about the aesthetics and how we came up with the design, just briefly, you know, we're dealing, like you said, this is a big building, and some of the challenge that you're dealing with when you're doing a lot of this articulation and repetitiveness with the style of multifamily in general is...
Costs money.
You get no, you get repetitiveness, and then you get bulk of scale. Now, there's certainly things that we can work on aesthetically, we're more than happy to work with the board to make sure this fits the character of what you need.
What, the town, it's not me, okay? It's like coming to the dump and saying, do you want this? No. But I think that we've got enough people saying, you know what, I get it, we're taking more housing, 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 but you're not fitting this into the neighborhood, into the town, it's just a giant building. And how come Westwood got that? And how many units is that on Everett Street? Okay, it's huge. But everybody's heads aren't completely blowing off because they've got green space, they've got, I'm not even asking you for a turret, I'm asking you for something other than a Juliet balcony. It's, and I'm not going to live there, but we're going to look at it, and we're going to, and, Jesus, are we going to look at it? When we come in and out of the train, when we go over to the grocery store, when we're on, at the Seven Hens?
If you live in the neighborhood.
Okay, guys, hold on, I get to bitch up here. Then I'll let you. So, I, again, we can't say no, but we do have design standards, and this is...
Is there a...
Yeah, we're getting kicked out of here in a minute, and I have to take the...
You do have to close the building, we have a nominal building custodian whose day ends at a certain time.
Can I, can I, so, okay, so that being said, hold on, Mr. Hearn, I know, I've got people that have sat here all night, I got to give them, I got to give, and we have people on there also? So I'm going to open it up to the audience real quick. We got about five minutes?
You don't get in the shirt.
I can't ask the company act, Sarah. Can you do a minute?
Yeah, definitely.
Not even a minute, okay.
Hi, I'm Rick Cody, I'm from 878 Washington Street, I got a direct abutter with the property. So I'm, I'll...
We're going to have to continue, so don't panic, just give us a real quick and then...
Yeah, at a glance, there's a lot of things I actually like about this for us, I look out into a parking lot that's just empty.
Okay.
The thing that happened here, though, is it's slicing off half of our, 10 feet of our property, which means our dumpster is gone now with this, and on top of that...
Are you the daycare?
Well, no, we're, we live in a townhouse, and this, so this, at the plants that I saw there, take out about 10 feet of our property, which we were sold by a new builder at the time, like, it was a new build.
Okay.
So it takes off that property, and it's also, yeah, my child's at the daycare, and this removes the playground.
Got it.
It's a pretty direct impact, and I just want to know, both you guys, and from you guys, like, what kind of, we can talk about it, what kind of information, and what, how did this happen?
I opened the scanner worms, Sarah's shaking her head, I opened the worms, you're right, you're right. I'm going to let you respond, yes.
I don't want the flavor that's left that we're taking somebody's property.
Okay.
We're not taking anybody's property.
We're going to, we're going to let Mr. Hearn answer, then I got to shut it off, and you're going to have to come back.
Somebody's using our property, and we're happy to talk with them and see what we can work out. We're not taking anybody's property. It's our property, somebody else is using our property, that's all, without permission.
Just one, just a final comment. Those possible six spaces of green space, maybe we could kind of float that towards the playground for the kids, you know?
We're happy to look at it, we'll see now and the next week.
I'm suffering more trouble with the boss over there.
Madam Chair, do you have to make a motion to continue to the 14th, 7 o'clock?
We are...
14th second?
So we're... We're going to, because we're getting kicked out of here, and I want everybody, I can't, if you get to speak, Mr. Hearn gets to answer, so we're going to, I'm sorry, guys, I know you sat here all night, but we...
Motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor to continue.
To July 14th at 7:00 PM here at the senior center.
Okay, 7?
And on Google Beazley.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we, I know, we're trying to fix the...
We don't have a FIAS, so...